Would you rise, please? Before we begin tonight, I think it's appropriate to recognize a distinguished citizen who has recently passed away, and that's Jonathan J. Woodman. John Woodman is known to many people in this city for many different things, for his involvement in important civic organizations, the hospital, Anna-Jake's Hospital, the Institution for Savings, the Rotary Club, I could go on and on and on. But the thing that I'll always remember John for was his steadfast commitment to the city of Newburyport. He's not a Newburyport native, but he somehow came down the river from Haverhill and said, "Here's where I'm gonna spend my life." And contributed dramatically to the rebirth of our central downtown, not only as an outside observer, but an investor. When Newburyport was a derelict community, John bought property, brought it up to snuff, and set the example for many others in the downtown. His architectural skills and his career in architecture is renowned. I could go through the list of structures that you would recognize, also being recognized by his peers with the American Institute of Architects. He was a great loss and we'll miss him. And he always had a smile. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Roll call for the meeting of April 8th. Councillor Devlin.
Here.
Councillor Earl.
Present.
Councillor Agarman.
Here.
Councillor Junta.
Present.
Councillor Khan.
Present.
Councillor Bryant is absent.
Councillor Shan.
Present.
Councillor Tontow.
Here.
Councillor Vogel.
Present.
Councillor Zede.
Present.
And Councillor President Connell.
Present. Let's see, do we have any late filed items that are on our desks?
There is the order that's on your desk, which is related to solar power. There is the committee items sheet that really are just items on your desk that are not a late file. And there are minutes which are late filed, it's a small revision, we'll call it, another in a series of scrivener's errors, and that is on your desk also.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items?
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is it done? Public comment period, and while the clerk is retrieving the list of names for us, I'd like to remind everyone in the room, before we go any further, to silence their phones so they don't interrupt the proceedings tonight. I'd also like to remind you that people who are going to be speaking should introduce themselves, name and address, please, and limit your comments to two minutes, because I suspect there will be many people commenting. See, we already have our first comment. Again, I'm going to be pretty strict about this two-minute rule.
Looks like seventeen.
Okay. There are... Yep. Seventeen people signed up. Let me get the first page out, on top first. So if we're ready, we have two minutes. Robert Uhlig, Bob?
Robert Uhlig, 174 Merrimack Street, a chair of the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. If I may, I'm just gonna hand out some support documents that I would ask be passed around, Attached is the memo that I used as a basis of speaking to you all the end of January when I was last in front of you, that set out the goals of the Redevelopment Authority for 2019. It also includes the Redevelopment Authority's framework plan, which identifies the area of reduced parking and expanded park that the authority has approved, as well as the conveyance's plan that the authority has indicated, the extents of the property it intends to convey and to whom, and all that information over top of the site survey. All that's in the packet. Just a little bit of background, Councillor Agarman told the NRA last year that we should shut down as of July 1st, 2018, and it's appropriate to look at how the NRA has taken its steps to wind down. The NRA has looked at its outstanding obligations and real estate that it owns, it hired counsel and mitigated contaminants to address environmental issues on the land that it owns, to reduce the liability for future owners. The NRA hired real estate counsel to look into the title to the land owned by the NRA, and our counsel found that three parcels that were thought to have been conveyed to the Waterfront Trust but were not, and one parcel that was in the name of the former owner. Corrective deeds have been delivered to the Waterfront Trust. In addition, a petition for a new certificate filed with the land court which would allow the NRA to file a deed to the city for parcel C, which is directly behind the Custom House. That draft deed has been delivered to the city council for review. You also know that three parcels of the authorities were conveyed to the Maritime Society with appropriate deed restrictions incorporated as requested by the city. The next step is that the deed to the city and the Waterfront Trust for the submerged tidelands. The NRA has prepared a plan to be recorded with that deed, and that plan would also be used for the conveyance of the landside west and east lots, and that would be the final step, would be the deeds for the east and west lots. So you can see that the NRA has taken city council's wishes to heart and has spent the last nine months moving its real estate to the appropriate parties, and all of the conveyances that go forward are in accordance with the city council ad hoc waterfront committee's document. The NRA has worked with the mayor and would like to continue on its path to deed the last remaining properties to custodians who will carry out the improvements of the waterfront. I would respectfully ask that rather than spending time on pursuing special legislation, that those efforts be redirected to establishing a working group that would look at the NRA and its assets and help direct a managed wind down. So with that, I would just be happy to answer any questions you may have about what I've handed out, what I've said, or the email that I sent this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because this matter's been before us before, and I know it's one of particular interest to everyone, I gave them a little extra time. The next speaker, please. Rebecca Broaddish. You have two minutes.
Thank you.
Your name and address, please.
Rebecca Broaddish, 26 Summa Place. I live and work in Newburyport, and I'm here with concerns about the new city parking plans. I work at Koya Leadership Partners, we're a business located at 55 Merrimack Street in Newburyport. We have 15 employees who work in our Newburyport office, and the majority do not live in Newburyport and rely on city parking passes. The cost for these annually right now is about $140 a year, and my understanding is that the new cost will be over $700 a year for those parking passes. More critical to our business than the cost of the parking is ensuring that our employees will have access to parking that's safe, nearby, and well lit. My understanding is that there will be a limit to the employee passes available and a limit to the spots where employees will be able to park, and that overflow will be directed to the dirt lots by the Custom House, which is a pretty long walk from our office on Merrimack Street and is not particularly well lit at night. We have 90% of our employees are female, and we have some concerns about women walking that distance at night in not well lit parking. I live in Newburyport, so I have access to resident parking, but I felt so strongly for my colleagues that I really wanted to come here and make this issue known to you. Many businesses rely on employees parking in order to draw people to work here, especially people who can't afford to live in Newburyport. And if you don't provide them with parking, the businesses may leave downtown Newburyport along with the business that they bring to Newburyport. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Becker.
Hi, my name's Jordan Becker. I live at 7 Sanborn Terrace in Amesbury. I'm the director of marketing at Interlocks, and I've been an employee there for 15 years. I commute from Amesbury daily, and I'm one of the many Newburyport employees who are supporting the city's commerce by working here. For over 30 years, the employees of Interlocks have depended on our on-street parking so that our customers can utilize the convenience of our private parking lot during their service time. But our on-street parking has been removed, and it's been proposed by others in the city that the side streets such as Market and Tickham be reduced or restricted as well. The initial proposed solution for employee parking to utilize the dirt lot behind the Custom House Maritime Museum is not a safe option. At Interlocks alone, we have over 50 employees, most of which who are women, are walking to their cars at the end of their shifts as late as 9:30 PM. The one-third mile across town is dimly lit in many areas, the sidewalks are not very clear during the winter months, and it's subjecting a large quantity of women to walk through the downtown bar scene late at night, often with large amounts of cash in their pockets at the ends of their shifts. The mayor's suggestion, suggested solution to expand employee parking in the NRA lot has no realistic timeline and is likely going to get wrapped up in legalities as it changes hands away from the Waterfront Trust. I'd like to see the city change its perspective on the garage away from profit and toward its intended purpose. Its purpose is to move parking off the waterfront, its purpose is to create better parking solutions in the downtown for visitors and tourism, and its purpose is to support the commerce of our downtown, and that includes supporting the city's employees. I ask that the council extend the existing employee parking permit to be accessible in the designated lots as well as the new parking garage, to allow employees across the whole city a safe place to park affordably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, both times. Robin Spiro. And I should apologize to everyone in advance if I mispronounced your names.
No, that's right.
Sometimes your signatures are hard to decipher.
My name is Robin Spiro. I live at 123 Atlantic Avenue in Salisbury. I'm also an employee of Interlocks, I've been working for that company for 25 years, so I've seen a lot of changes in Newburyport over that time. Most of the time that I've actually worked there, we've had some adequate parking on our side of town. Now that the parking garage is there, it's taken almost all of that parking away from us. So as we move forward into this new plan, affordable parking for the people who work at Interlocks and on this side of town, you're talking about Michael's Harborside, the Black Cow, many female women that are going to be leaving these restaurants. We leave at 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning with cash in their pocket, walking across town to either Prince Place or down behind the Maritime Museum, is really a scary proposition, to be honest with you. So I'd like to ask for your consideration in helping us find adequate parking as you're mapping it out on this side of town. Right now, it doesn't exist. Also, I feel that the value for those lots closer to downtown are more for tourism. During the day, it would be better for the city of Newburyport if you open that lot up for people who are coming into town and who are going to be spending their money in those stores. Doesn't make sense for me to park there on a 12-hour day or an eight-hour day. Makes more sense for me to park in the lot, but right now, I'm in the garage, I'm sorry. Right now, there's a huge cost for that, but it doesn't make sense to me that I'm tying up a spot downtown when I could be parking in the garage a quarter of a mile from downtown. So I'd like to ask for your consideration, that you also think about the employees that are supporting your commerce as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jordan Cashman.
Jordan Cashman, 18 Whittier Ave. I commute from Amesbury. My mother and I own a shop next to Interlocks and Get in Shape for Women at 58 Merrimack Street, so the garage is right across from us. We are a very small, family-owned business, and right now, we are struggling with the idea, I just had a baby, Summer, who joined us tonight, she's almost nine months old, and I take her to work with me a lot. And right now, it is a struggle trying to find parking, and infants have a lot of gear, and I am a mom that needs to take her daughter to work with her. So parking, you know, a third of a mile away is not convenient, especially in the winter. But not only that, the street parking that got taken away that we would rely on, since we're not in the lot parking, our customers, we've actually had a lot of complaints from our customers saying that they would normally rely on the street parking and they would leave because now they're not finding parking that's available. And also too, we have three employees, my mother, myself, and a woman bathroom are about to hire a fourth employee, and the cost of a, to park in the garage is actually a lot for a very small, family-owned business. So that is something that we're gonna be struggling with as well. And then us leaving at night and walking a third of a mile, we're all women, safety isn't a concern with that, especially in the winter, and the sidewalks not being plowed. So that is something that we're struggling with right now. The garage is definitely going to affect our business and also our safety. So please take in consideration that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginny Ramo.
Hi Ginny Ramo, 28 Topins Lane, Newburyport. I own Interlocks, which is across the street from the garage, and I'm here tonight to advocate for my employees. They are desperately in need of parking that is safe, accessible, and affordable. Currently, the employee parking permits are $140 a year, but most of that availability is truly in the NRA East lot. The Prince Place lot fills up first thing in the morning, as does the NRA West lot fills up. Most of my employees are coming in late morning, early afternoon, and working at night. Of my 53 employees, 50 of them are female. Some are victims of domestic violence, some are victims of stalking, and they nearly all are working mothers. Most of them working at night, not a single one of them feels safe to walk to the remote dark NRA East lot. 22 of these employees recently appeared before the city's Parking Advisory Committee to advocate for themselves. They lost their on-street parking over the past year during the creation of the parking garage, and they're now seeking to purchase employee parking permits, but they're hoping those permits can be used in the garage on the west side of the downtown in our neighborhood. The Chamber has written a letter to the council supporting employee parking in the garage, and I know that Councillor Zede has put forth a recommendation for a permit at $60 a month, $720 a year, which is 400% more than the current employee permit. As you consider permit rates for the garage, I hope you will act with fairness to all employees downtown, thoughtfulness toward all the downtown businesses, including those of us on the west side. Please consider maybe changing the location of employee parking permits to include the NRA East lot, the Prince Place lot, and the garage. This forms a triangle around the perimeter of the downtown. It removes employees from Green Street Lot, from the NRA West Lot, and from the Waterfront Trust Lot, making it available to customers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don Little.
Don Little, 6 Cottage Court. My name is on the agenda for reappointment to Community Preservation Committee. It's a three-year term, so I guess it's been three years since I last stood here. The committee is made up of six members who are from other committees, and I am one of the three at large. And I'm interested in serving again, so I'd appreciate your approval tonight and in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Strand.
We answered yes to having him come in. Not me. Hello, I'm David Strand from 10 Railroad Street where I own real estate and run my marketing office, and also 9 Blue Hill Avenue where I live, in Omsley Island in Newbury. I'm here in support of not dissolving the NRA and in support of exactly Mr. Uhlig's statement. I think he paraphraged it very well, that he's been, the NRA has worked very cooperatively to try to come up with a plan to use the NRA as an effective tool to be do the job that it was intended to do. As many of you know, I have, I was asked many years ago by then-chairman of the NRA, Mr. James Sherranley, to see if I could rally a call from the other side of the quieter side of this hotly debated political issue here in town. And I did so. I drew much criticism, but I put my heart and soul in understanding the charter of what this group was trying to do. And I put myself in the position of thinking of the future, of thinking of my daughter being 20, 25, 30 years old perhaps, and living in this community, and what this critical, important decision-making is all about. Their charter is to make for an economically viable approach. They're an important tool, and there are many, many unanswered questions in my mind regarding ownership of a dirty lot. How can you dissolve a redevelopment authority? But most importantly, what happens next should you decide to move forward with this decision? As far as I know, there is no plan. And Mr. Uhlig has outlined a plan that I believe is the way forward for us to actually achieve what everyone I'm talking to, and I know they're not here enough, but I can assure you, the voices from the people that I know are saying, "Get it done, but for gosh's sakes, do not let this cost us another tax dollar." And right now, we do not have a plan, that I know of, that outlines that. The Newburyport Redevelopment Authority has put forward several plans to do so, and I would ask the city council to seriously consider that we have the tool in place to get this done once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Bruce Bergwall. Hope I've got your name right, Bruce.
Hi, Bruce Bergwall, 32B Bromfield Street. I am peering before you to take on a position with the Licensing Commission. A good friend of mine, Commissioner Ted Waldron, approached me a few months ago and asked if I'd be interested in serving the city and its citizens. I have, in the past, worked in a similar capacity in other communities, and I find it would be an honor to be able to support and serve both this body and the mayor's office as a commissioner. So I look forward and I hope to receive approval on that. I had the good fortune of joining one of their meetings back in March, the monthly meeting, saw the process, met with a number of people, and feel very comfortable in being able to move forward and, you know, collaborate and support their efforts. So I hope you can move forward and see through to my nomination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Harris.
Good evening. Bill Harris, 56 Lime Street. I'm here as one of the settlers of the Newburyport Waterfront Trust about Order 24. I have, I'd just like to review a few outstanding issues that would not be resolved by mere passage of Order 24. I'd like to provide each of the city councillors an Excel spreadsheet that just shows diversion of funds that were taken by the city without the consent of the other parties to the trust starting in fiscal year 2011 through 2018. And basically, so from, for 19 years, the Waterfront Trust leased on the water side, its signs were not just upriver in the embankment, they were downriver. And I have one with a chain of custody showing that you came and you paid from the downriver side at City Hall for the Waterfront Trust, not the city. So one of the three issues we have that are of concern is that the proposal to take all submerged lands by the city violates the existing rights of the Waterfront Trust and is a diversion by the city of property of a charitable trust, which we think you ought to take seriously. The total that has been diverted appears to be close to $500,000, estimating through the end of this June. So it's a half million dollars. And there are operating expenses, but it's a potential major loss to the trust if you try to take that, and it needs to be resolved. The second issue involves the bulkhead, two and a half feet that was extended in 2013. The NRA agreed by unanimous vote. Jordy Vining, on behalf of the city, in May 2013, said that the NRA had to convey that or it would water, it would landlock the trust. There's nothing that I see in Order 24 that would have that property go to the trust, not to the city.
Bill?
Okay.
Your two minutes is up.
Okay.
Can you please?
And so, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Solemy.
Tom Solemy, 16 Ting Street. Pardon me. I'm the former chairman, or a former chairman, of the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, but I'm appearing here tonight as a citizen and a taxpayer. I respectfully ask that you don't rush into what is being contemplated tonight. I don't think we can portray this as a careful culmination of a mutually agreed-upon plan. Yeah, we've been discussing the dissolution of the NRA for some time, but I assume we all want to do this in a careful way that doesn't open the door for future problems, and I don't think this is that. Why are we rushing now? The parties in the waterfront are talking, we have a plan in place, the chairman of the NRA leads a firm that only builds world-class parks, but also at one time it designed our own park. We are moving forward. I know at least some of you were caught off-guard by this measure last week, so I beg you not to allow yourselves to be pressured to support a measure you don't completely understand, or I'm guessing perhaps you don't, because I don't think you can bet on things working out for the best down there, because I've been, I've worked down there, and when it comes to the waterfront, you're gonna lose that bet every time. I mean, if there's some snag that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, and it's because it's so important. So I haven't had any great time to understand Article 97. Even at a cursory glance, to me, it leaves, reveals yellow flags. I don't see that it would require the city to change parking to park. I think it would probably just allow it to remain the way it is. And I even read that the Sierra Club writes in about 97 that every legislative session sees a passage of 50 to 100 bills that change the use of Article 97 lands. So it seems like the scrutiny of this is scant, and I'm sure someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but I haven't a lot of time to research Article 97. I don't think, if that change is possible, I don't think you can make promises for future councils. If you leave the future of the waterfront in doubt at all, anything could happen. I have more concerns, but I'll end with this. I think if you vote on this measure tonight without understanding every possible outcome, we could be looking at dirt lots forever, or possibly worse, I don't know. But I do know that if that happens, if we're stuck with that forever, I think all of you are gonna be walking by there, looking at those dirt lots and saying, and wishing you hadn't contributed to that. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Heath.
Elizabeth Heath, 25 Oak Street, Newburyport. I'm the president of the Committee for an Open Waterfront. What I think you're planning to do tonight might be legal, then again, it might not. But either way, it's certainly unethical. What's the rush? I encourage you to vote no on Order 24 tonight, or at least to postpone the vote until sufficient time is passed for all parties, including the public, to learn about and thoroughly evaluate the actions proposed therein. At first blush, this looks to be nothing more than a thinly veiled land and money grab by the city. This is a really bad image for you and the administration. Hold off. It's waited this long, there's no reason to go off hell-bent for leather now. Or better yet, let the existing process play out. It's all going along now better than it ever has. Allow it to complete on its own without inside, without outside interference. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Small.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Small. I live at 25 Oak Street in Newburyport, and I'm concerned about Order 24. I've read the revised order, and I have a few questions. You needn't answer them right now, but eventually would be very nice. If the intent is to turn the land and the tidelands over to the Waterfront Trust, why does it say that the city will retain the NRA holdings permanently? Those seem to be conflicting ideas. What does the Waterfront Trust think about this course of action? I don't know if you've gotten their opinion. And public, public park and parking is not an excluded use. Woo! Does that mean that it will be like Riverside Park, which is a park but is really a parking lot? And where is the commitment to build and maintain a park? There don't seem to be any plans referenced, no specifics, no timeline, no funding strategy. Isn't this just an effort to divert, I say this cynically, isn't this just an effort to divert income from the waterfront, to pay for the garage which, despite predictions, may not be able to fund itself? I think that's been a fear of many of us since the inception of the idea. And what's the rush, as other people have said? Is there anything that you don't want the public to know? That's, that's a strong feeling in the community. The optics of this are awful. It's no wonder that people don't It's no wonder that people don't trust government. This is just another example. Why not at least delay the vote until the answers to these and other questions can be shared with the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dale Granger-Eckert. June is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and I've requested permission to have a gold-purple tent and table, and hopefully a small rally, if I can get some people behind me, for Alzheimer's awareness. June 15th, the date I chose, would lead into and help promote the Alzheimer's Association's Worldwide Awareness Day, which would be that Friday, June 21st, the longest day. My husband and I have been on the move for Alzheimer's Association as part of the Marathon and Run Team since 2006, and other events have represented the association and have been in the homecoming parade for 10 years. Having the table downtown would offer great visibility, as well as give us the opportunity to share current information from the association on research, services, how to become active in volunteering or advocating, upcoming fundraisers and events. And I would have signs to promote the association and ending Alzheimer's. But most of all, it would give us the opportunity to share and talk with people who know what it means to live with Alzheimer's. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Molly Edinburgh, 35 Toppin's Lane and City of Newbury Port. Thank you, Councilor Eggerman, for sponsoring one of the late-file items, and this is the request for proposal for alternative on-bill credits, as provided under the new Massachusetts SMART program, which stands for Solar Massachusetts Renewable Targets. This program is similar to the previous solar incentive program and provides fixed discounts on electric utility bills regardless of the energy market, and much like the city's arrangement with the solar farm in Salisbury, of which the city receives a fixed discount of $40,000 per year. Those credits are being applied to Department of Public Services at this time. This program and contract before you is a 20-year contract with this selected provider, Nexamp. It has been sent to the city solicitor for review, and we expect comments back by the end of the week, so you can make plans for committee to review that. Steve Burcom is also reviewing this with the superintendent's office and the school committee, as we are suggesting applying these credits to the schools. I have to leave shortly for another meeting, but if you have any questions, I welcome emails or calls. And a quick reminder, we have our Green Expo this coming Thursday night from 4:00 to 8:00 at the middle school. We have a lot of speakers, a lot of exhibitors, and a lot of city departments will be there talking about their issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rhonda McManus.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda McManus. I live at 143 Linfield Street in Lynn, and I am the owner of Get in Shape for Women at 58 Merrimack Street, which is in Ginny's retail space. When I first came here, one of the first things that I was warned about was that parking would be an issue. Not being familiar with Newbury Port, I, over the years, have seen that that is quite an issue. For my business, we have relied extensively on the street parking. The lot itself is for our clients, so my employees and myself, coming from Lynn, I relied on the street parking daily. I've been there since 2011. I maybe naively thought that having the garage would be a good thing for our businesses, and maybe it will be for our clients, that remains to be seen. But as far as the employee parking goes, it's going to be a problem. It already has been with the construction, and now with the street parking going to be permanently taken away, that's probably 30 spaces that we lose, estimating. I, being in fitness, I can't really say the third of a mile is a problem for me to walk, but walking at night, you know, alone, I have concerns about that. I just think that it should be thought out a little better as far as if the parking garage is going to be sustainable. I think you should think about allowing more people to park in it. I think just expecting that hourly parking is going to raise the revenue that you want is probably pretty optimistic. I think allowing employees to share that garage would solve two problems. It would give you some money that you could count on, and it would give our employees another option. The other thing is to think about, research has shown that consumers, retail clients, do not want to walk over a third of a mile. It's just the way it is. So you can have your nice garage there, maybe safe, well-lit, but if there's parking closer to them in the lots by the Black Cow or any of those other lots downtown, that's where people are going to park. So I would just ask you to please consider allowing our employees to park in the garage, and also to think about making their rate affordable. Like you say, the over $700 a year is very high.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Ketchum.
Hi, Pam Ketchum, 15 Washington Street. I'm also concerned about the rush to bring the revised Order 24 to a vote. It was brought up Thursday night at the Joint Planning and Development Committee as a whole meeting, and it was not voted on because there were so many open questions. The public has made it clear that they want an open waterfront for everyone to enjoy. Does Article 97 ensure that? And what will happen to the cash in the NRA bank accounts and future revenue from the parking in the NRA lots? I think it should be used for a park, as it was intended. I urge you not to rush on such an important asset, but to make sure all the questions and concerns are answered and addressed before voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. I want to thank all of the people who signed up and spoke for limiting your comments to two minutes. That makes it a lot easier for everyone to have a fair hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to walk us through the consent agenda.
Tonight, that consists of the approval of the minutes as revised for March 25th. There are four transfers. Transfer 45 is a number of items over to part-time enforcement officers, administration, 5,000 parking supplies, and parking ticket that's to go to Budget and Finance.
Excuse me, Richard. I jumped right over something that I should not have.
I thought you knew what I knew.
Yeah. So I'm going to stop you right there and ask, Mayor, you're on the agenda to offer a comment. I apologize for skipping over you.
Oh, I thought you should not have any.
Probably fine.
This is conspiracy.
It's a busy agenda, busy night.
Yeah.
And I do not have a formal written update for you tonight, but we will work on getting one out later in the week, as it has just been an incredibly busy time in the city. So I'm going to go through a couple important items up front, and then I'd like to address the home rule petition that is coming potentially out of committee this evening. First and foremost, I am very proud to announce that the city's AAA bond rating has been reaffirmed. This is really significant. Unfortunately, it was really buried in the Saturday, like, last page of the Daily News, so I don't think anybody saw it. I personally think it deserves front-page news, but that's just my opinion as mayor. On Wednesday, following the passage of the Military Justice Bill, and signed by the governor on January 3rd, we have been asked to go before the Armory Commission in Natick, where they will be voting to surplus the emergency operations building, which, as you know, we have been looking at for a permanent home for youth services and moving them from school. So we will have more information on you, on how that process goes. Complete Streets, I would like to thank all of the public members who participated in that process. I think TEC did a really nice job in terms of holding two pretty large, significant sessions for public input, and I think all of us can agree that there are numerous projects in the city that would benefit from a Complete Streets model. But we have been talking for a long time about the problems that we're having at Lower Atkinson, Pioneer Field, and Merrimack Street, in terms of the number of youth who participate in sports there, and the problems with safety and traffic. So that's not to diminish any of the other projects that we certainly will continue to work on, in particular, I know the residence at High Street at Marches Hill, and we have some ideas that will happen through our TSAC meeting in terms of the signaling and safety there. But that will be the grant that we will be putting forward that's due in May to MassDOT regarding a project for $400,000 for the Pioneer Field area, Merrimack Street, and Lower Atkinson. The other issue I wanted to talk to you about tonight was the community host agreement with Happy Valley. This is an executive function to sign and approve this agreement, but I have been pushing back with Happy Valley for many, many months. The area of contention with them has been the community impact fees. There is, it's unclear, there's discrepancies from the Cannabis Control Commission whether or not impact fees can extend beyond five years. We've had differences of opinion legally, and we finally came to the agreement that we will receive 3% a year, which will translate to about $1 million annually for five years, so approximately $5 million. And then we will have put in the agreement that there will be negotiation in good faith to extend the impact agreement. It will not be at 3%, but some other figure, should there be clarification by the Cannabis Control Commission regarding the extension of impact fees. Tonight before you, you have an appointment of Mr. Rich Person, who I have put before you to replace the holdover appointment of Bob Ulich on the NRA. Richard was selected because he's a long-term resident, an entrepreneurial businessman, and very committed to the city. You have information in your packet regarding that particular appointment. I also wanted to take a few minutes to talk to you about why we are here. When I first began as mayor, one of the first tasks was to get to know and understand a lot of the boards and commissions. My first meeting at the waterfront trust, I was appalled. People were fighting, they couldn't get along, they were asking, I had $14,000 in legal fees about a ticket booth, they were sending public record requests to each other. It was one of the most dysfunctional groups of people that I had yet to see in the city. Gradually, over time, we've been able to replace some of the positions on the waterfront trust with people who began to work together and have done a really beautiful job in terms of taking care of the land behind the firehouse, and as stewards of that particular property. However, we all have been wanting to move forward on doing something with the central waterfront, and particularly reducing parking, and doing something with these dirt lots, making them a lot safer, improving lighting. And so we began, first I began with the waterfront trust, bringing together to agree that it was time to modernize the trust documents. Then a few settlers were brought into the process, and then gradually, members of the NRA came to the table. We met for a while, we were all in agreement that it was time to modernize these trust documents, and then the ad hoc committee was set up with the city council, who met for about a year and a half, involving all the stakeholders, came up with this consents document, and then passed it back to the city to begin meeting to move forward with this process. So now here we are, several years later, after multiple, multiple meetings and negotiations, going through many of our meetings, we went page by page by page of the trust documents to make changes based on what we thought everybody wanted. Then it was about three weeks ago where I was handed an amendment, which is not at all what we had all agreed to do, that puts the city in a worse position than it is today. So the waterfront trust is to take all of the property, except for the shared tied lands and a small space on the other side of the custom house, and the city is supposed to accept all the capital improvements, the bulkhead, the boardwalk, take all the liability, responsibility for, build the park, and where are we supposed to get the revenue to do that? So I'm very disappointed that this is where we are in the process. And so we had drafted a home rule petition eight years ago, and we sat on it, because I really pushed the planning department and others to let us try and work through this long and protracted process. And we've reached the point where we are, this is where we are. I believe a home rule petition is the appropriate way to dissolve the NRA at this juncture. We have added Article 97, and regardless of some of the comments that you have heard, the Article 97 will protect the property. We have hired Richard J. Lyman from MLS Strategies, a lobbyist group, and from Levin and...
Ms. Levin.
Ms. Levin, thank you. I know I was saying it backwards, who was recommended to us by Senator Riddor, former Senator Riddor, who is here to answer your questions regarding home rule petitions tonight. So the property will be protected forever. The property will then come to the city, and then we will enter into direct negotiations with the waterfront trusts to achieve the goal that all of us wanted, was to build the park. The revenue from the NRA can be earmarked for the park, so that we don't have to worry about that particular piece either. And the timing is important, because House Ways and Means releases the FY '20 budget next week. And that if we can at least file it this week, there can begin to be work happening at the legislative level to move this process forward. I don't think we're rushing. You've had the home rule petition, which has just been tweaked, in your packet for nine months. I know this came as sort of a surprise to some members of the public, but ultimately, our goal is to end up exactly where we started with this process, with the waterfront trust having the property, the city having a means of getting some revenue to build the park, using the NRA property to do so, and protecting it forever from development. So I look forward to your discussion, and as I said, Attorney Lyman is here to answer questions that you may have regarding the vote and discussion that's before you tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions of the mayor? Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. For the public, could you connect the dot between your concern of the amendment to the documents regarding the waterfront trust and the dissolvement of the NRA?
Certainly, Counselor. The amendment to the waterfront trust doc does not address any of the pages and pages of work that was recommended by the ad hoc committee, nor the work that we did over the course of many, many meetings, going through in terms of the number of NRA members. The list goes on and on in terms of, and it would take way too much time to go through that whole document in terms of the things that should be in a revised trust document, not an amendment that, as I said, essentially puts the city in the exact position, except now we have more responsibility, all the liability, all the responsibility, all the capital responsibility, and it's just, we're not in a good place right now.
If you could just connect the dot, and understanding that that is your concern, how is it that dissolving the NRA at this moment solves that?
Because we stop the process from, you know, going forward in terms of the NRA just conveying all the property, and gives us an opportunity to work through, once the NRA is out of the picture, then it gives us the opportunity to negotiate directly with the waterfront trust and put the items back into, to rewrite the trust documents, to open up the entire trust docs as we had originally planned. I don't see what going back to the table after four years, five years of negotiations, and going back to the table and bringing all these people back to start over again. You know, we've done this process, and this is where we ended up.
Thank you.
Counselors? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to pick up where he left.
I think it was on the second transfer, 46. Health insurance, 2,000, to LCM Clerical, same amount, to go to Budget and Finance. Next transfer, 47, general fund, free cash, 6,000, special needs parks, equipment, same amount, Budget and Finance. Transfer 48, multiple accounts, 1,600,000 to multiple accounts, 1,600,000, to go to Budget and Finance. Communications, 46. Communication 136, Yankee Homecoming, 2019, from July 26th to August 4th, public safety. Communication 137, IPA 5K, Grace, on 519, 714, and 98 of this year, to go to public safety. Communication 138, Lions Club. Communication, 138, Lions Club, 10-mile road race and the 5K race, 7-30, 2019, Public Safety. Communication, 139, Communication for Compliment and Page Regarding Closed Legal Matters, to go to General Government. Communication, 140, SIP, shop and support, it's an event, 5-10, 2019, Public Safety. Communication, 141 is the resume of Dr. Sam Marabi, as requested, to go to Public Safety. Following our appointments, Appointment 92, Ron Ziemba, 58, Lime Street, Unit 1, CPA Act Representing Historic Commission Until 4-1, 2022. This is, next appointment is to be referred to license and permit. Appointment 93, Bruce Bergwall, 32B, Bronfield Street, the License Commission Until 5-1, 2025. Following two are reappointments. Article 94, Appointment 94, excuse me, Dawn Little, 6 Cottage Court, CPC, until 5-1, 2022. Appointment 95, Brian Greenberg, 29 Lafayette Street, Disabilities Commission Until 3-1, 2022. Next we have, for the first time, certain items from Budget and Finance and Public Safety that are part of the consent agenda, which, I won't go through all of them, I think that would be somewhat morious. Let me just announce their identifier. Once they are voted on with the consent agenda, they are out, so that when we reach those matters in committee items, they won't have to be removed, they'll be simply approved or disapproved or whatever. So they are the following: Transfer 42, Transfer 43, Transfer 44, Order 93, Order 90. Communication 135, that was Budget and Finance, Public Safety, Order 31, Order 32, and Communication 126. And having said that, Mr. President, that's the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Tagged. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Let's move into the regular agenda. We first have enforced the mayor's update, is that correct?
Motion received and filed.
Second. Motion to receive and file, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What are we receiving and filing?
The mayor's update.
The verbal one that she gave us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, what's next? Communications?
Communication 120, the tabled Central Congregational Grant Award Letter.
Motion removed from the table?
Second. Moved and seconded, removed from the table, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's off the table.
Motion tabled?
Tagged.
Moved and seconded to table. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is back on the table. All right. Appointments.
Next on the list is Appointment 96, Richard Pearson, Pearson, excuse me.
Person.
That's what I meant. Four Rights Court, redevelopment authority, 4-10, 2022. I should read, "I hereby appoint subject to approval the following named individual as a member of the Newburyport redevelopment authority to fulfill the open position that was temporarily held by Robert Ullig as a holdover. Terms shall expire on April 10, 2024."
What is the rule of counsel?
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second. Counselor Agarwal.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if we should take this after, depending on what we do with the dissolution order. The timing is that there is a, it wasn't properly noticed, but there is a meeting of the NRA tomorrow night. So the question is whether, you know, we go forward with this on an emergency basis. We don't do it at all. So I guess I'd like to make a suggestion to the president that you take this up later in the agenda.
If that were to be the case, we would need a withdrawal of the motion to refer and a withdrawal of the second.
So just to clarify, so we're gonna move the appointment, oh, sorry. Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify, so we're moving it in the agenda to later, so wouldn't that be a, do we need to waive the rules to move anything on the agenda, or?
No, I can make that ruling as long as this item is withdrawn from the, from the consideration on the floor right now.
Okay, I could withdraw my motion then.
And the second?
Yeah, I withdraw the second.
All right, then it's my intention to move that item farther down the agenda, out of time appropriate and connected to the planning and development action on Order 24, adjacent to Order 24, right after Order 24.
I've got it in the agenda right there, Mr. President.
You do. Very well, thank you. Thank you to the sponsor and the secondor of some flexibility in that regard. Where else are we?
That would lead us to orders. Order 94, traffic changes, green Pleasant and Tickham Street.
What is the rule of counsel? Motion to refer to Public Safety. Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Agarwal.
It's just a referral, but so if people understand timing, that means I would like to get it out at our next meeting, which I guess is April 28th, because the timing has to do with the opening of the garage, which I would figure out what to do with our traffic. Another correction is Counselor Shan of Ward 3, who's also factored as a cosponsor, that may have been a scribbler's error of mine. That's all, that's what I'm describing.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of referring this matter to Public Safety, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Next item.
Next item is Order Number 95, which is the Resolution Promoting Awareness of Sewerage Pollution in Public Water.
Motion to refer to Public Safety?
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Con.
Thank you, Council President. Just, there's a memo also attached to the resolution, but as folks have been learning more and more about the daily news, just over the past few years, hearing about the combined sewer overflow situation and how it's affecting our, the Merrimack River in terms of the amount of raw sewage that's being dumped during, or discharged during severe storm events. So the purpose of this resolution is, while there have been previous legislative matters filed at the House and Senate level, they were unable to go anywhere, and it seems like there's a lot of promise happening right now in the current session of the Massachusetts State and House in terms of the number of different legislative matters before them. This specific resolution is really looking at, and that's what the memo explains, is at the public notification aspect. And I've included the memo here, as well as the references to the other legislative matters filed, but this resolution, again, public notification and just the metering, and it's sponsored by a significant number of senators, our own Senator, Representative to Disaglio, as well as Representative Kelkhorst have also supported. So I think it's, to me, this resolution would be a way to solidify the feelings of the residents of Newburyport and the city council, so that's why we could refer to committee and discuss and refine over there. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry. Second. Thank you, Counsel. Next item?
Next item is the late file, Order 96, which is a, starts with a memorandum from the mayor, Molly Attenborough, and the Energy Advisory Committee to Counselor Agarwal and the city council, related to solar alternative on-bill credits. Attached to that is the credit purchase and sale agreement, which is 21 pages in length. Mr. President.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities?
Second. Moved and seconded, this is the public utilities discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public Securities. Ordinances?
There are none, Mr. President.
How many items, I think the first one up is, what do we have?
Motion to approve Transfer 42.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Budget and Finance Committee recommended by a vote of 2 to 1 to recommend approval of this transfer for the parks department. It is a transfer of $28,500 from the health insurance budget where it's not needed this year, this rest of this fiscal year, to the parks for the funding of seasonal labor, again, to the amount of $28,500. This is necessary for a couple of reasons. First of all, when we passed the budget a year ago, we, of course, what the council does is pass the money that's to be allocated from the general fund for the parks department. The parks department also had $19,600 that they had intended to take from the Mosley Trust, or be, they had asked the Mosley Trust to donate, in addition to $21,600 from the school department, because it was then, when we did the budget a year ago, it was anticipated they would work, they would take care of the school fields. The Mosley, the work, the parks department did do the work in fall in Mosley, it was a removal of dangerous trees, but the trust would not transfer funds under the argument, which is probably a correct argument, that they do not want to dip into their principal, that they would just use interest, and so therefore the parks department did not get that money to fund seasonal labor. Secondly, in August, it was a shift away from the parks department taking care of the school fields to the school taking that responsibility, right? So that's part of it. The parks department lost $41,200 that they had thought would be budgeted to them from non-general fund sources. Secondly, as they review the spring projects, the parks department, you know, needs seasonal labors in order to do the general upkeep of the, of the parks and also the rail trail. If I can recall, a year ago, and maybe you've got the calls too, that when the parks department was taking care of the, of trying to, try and prepare the fields for the school department, there were some complaints about what was being done in the parks. I think this labor, this transfer will enable the parks to do what they need to do for the parks. So two of us recommended that we approve. The, again, the parks department lost $41,200, they're asking for 28.5 for part-time and seasonal labor to make it for the rest of the fiscal year and the critical spring period. And...
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor G.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, you know, certainly I understand the need. I'm not exactly clear how we got here, so maybe others are, but what's not clear to me, and the reason I was the no vote in committee, is that, you know, we had this discussion actually fairly in depth, I would say, during last year's budget process, Mr. President, and it was actually the proposed budget that cut the labor by 50%. That line was cut in the proposal from the administration, it was on a cut that was made here on the council. And at the time, the argument was that the, there was a corresponding, fairly substantial increase in full-time labor, and there was some discussion about how full-time would be more advantageous and more easy to manage, and there's greater needs here around it. So that was one aspect that's a little confusing to me. The second is, this school thing is still not entirely clear to me. So yes, there may have been a loss per se of some funds, but there's also a loss of work that needed to be done that accompanies it, so there's some accounting questions there. We now understand the school department has actually hired a caretaker for their properties, their lawns and what have you, but there's still some crossover on some big projects. You also notice in the transfer we sent to committee tonight, that there's a $30,000 on request for a tractor for the school. So we're having some things that are, you know, a little bit confusing to me. I didn't, I didn't see the line here, so I could not vote to support it, and I just felt it was important to at least explain why.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Here are two noes. Is there anything else in Budget and Finance, Counselor?
Motion to approve Transfer 43, free cash, 28K to a slop mower purchase.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Con.
Yes, this committee recommends 3 to 0 for approval. The, this is occasioned by a couple of things. This would be a slop mower for the parks department. First of all, there is an OSHA mandate that, that you can't use standard mowers on anything more than 15-degree angle, and so you have some rail trail property, you have the Botlet Mall, and you have March's Hill, that all pose challenges in terms of the, of the angle. Secondly, it would be time-saving. Thirdly, the parks department is looking, in a relatively short term, for two new mowers. This would be one of them. It can be used not only in the, in the, on the slopes, but it can also be used, of course, where it's flat, so this would make the parks department more efficient in doing that, and it's critically needed right now for, for the spring mower.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Next item.
Thank you. Motion to approve Transfer 44. It's from CIP Reservation Terrace Wall Construction to, it's also from CIP Plum Island Beach Dune.
Second.
President, I have to accuse myself to avoid an appearance of unethical behavior.
I might just conflict of interest.
Second, or was that second?
Yeah, I seconded, I did second.
Counselor Con, discussion.
That was seconded.
Counselor Con.
Budget and Finance also recommended approval by a 3 to 0 vote. We had actually already approved this money for the use of blocks on reservation terrace, which was not met well by DEP, because they do not want permanent hard structures. And so this proposal is, there's gonna be sand that will be drudged from the Merrimack River, I think moved to the parking lot, and then eventually moved over. GZA Engineering is providing technical engineering assistance. UNH is going to provide dune nourishing assistance, and this is a critical need for the people who live there, and to prevent the continuing erosion of the dunes.
Further discussion. Hearing none, I'm sorry, Counselor G.
Yeah, that's my word, so I do want to speak just briefly about it. I said a lot of this in committee, but just for what it's worth, so this is a nourishing project, it's the second one, and we've been about a three-year time span. This area of the island has unfortunately been hit disproportionately by erosion. Mr. President, many on the island, myself included, having now spent four years learning about it, believe there's a strong correlation between the completion of the South Jetty and this, this specific erosion pattern, in particular because this same erosion pattern existed or occurred immediately after the last jetty repair, which was sometime in the 1970s. There's a lot of lore around the Blizzard of '78 altering the jetty in a way that balanced things. So there's not a lot, actually, I think one thing I hear about from island a lot is that there's a, it's a, a lot of natural things happening. There's actually less natural things happening there than you think, because the entire coastline has basically been altered by human beings over the last several hundred years, all the way from the top of Maine to the bottom of Florida. There are jetties, riverbed walls, other things that help with river navigation and all sorts of things. So this area is getting, basically being scoured out, the bowl is basically being dug out, and a lot of sand is basically being piled up on the other side. So from several years ago, there were homes that were deeply in trouble that are now very safe, there are now homes that were previously very safe that are now deeply in trouble. So Plum Island is a problem that we manage, it isn't a problem that we solve, that'll be a recurring theme for me tonight on other topics. So what we want to do is that we want to, basically, there's always two difficult things with sand nourishment, one is finding sand, and the second one's placing it. This, this specific sand is actually not coming from the water, it's basically piled up on a parking lot at the captain's lead, which is at the end, who is actually desperate to get rid of it, because they scoured this exact area a couple of years ago, and guess where all the sand came back, from, basically from the sand that was going around. So they're gonna pay the cost to get the sand from that position. It actually would probably be stockpiled in the parking lot there for a short time until it's moved. We did hit a buzzsaw with the block project, but this one is in much better shape. First of all, nourishment's are very well accepted by the DDP Conservation Commission, they're in fact encouraged, there's planting that goes with them, which helps substantially with retaining the dune, and it's something you build upon over time. And in addition to that, ECR, which the landowner has already granted construction access, so that's a positive thing. And the last one I want to mention, it's important, is that the residents are actually putting in a substantial amount of money out of their own pockets. This is not the entire project, in fact, it's really just a piece of it. So last I heard, they had raised some $15,000 or so towards a goal of approximately $27,000. approximately twenty-seven thousand, because this project requires one thousand, two thousand two yards of sand. They have a thousand off that parking lot, they need the other thousand, they're going to buy it out of pocket from a company probably called Beverly Warren, which supplies appropriate sand. So this is an engineered solution. GZA is doing wrong. This isn't just something on the beach, and it is something that we're going to have to continue to monitor, not just for the benefit of the residents, but we do have substantial infrastructure down there in the form of our water sewer system and so forth. So I hope that you will support it, and just wanted to let you know that this is, this is not a one-shot thing. It's not isolated. It's part of a larger ongoing discussion. We've talked about paths and access to protecting dunes, so it's a holistic approach, and I hope that you will support for our residents up there on the island. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Could someone give Counselor Agnew? Oh, there he is. Counselor Tantar, anything else on the committee?
Order ninety-three, gift of artwork from Scott Signores.
Moved and seconded. All of discussion. Counselor Tantar.
Yes, Mr. Signores has given a gift of Richard M. Gibney oil painting. Richard Gibney is a fairly well-known combat painter in the South Pacific during World War II. He's passed away, and Mr. Signores is giving this a gift. What the oil painting happens to be is a painting, an oil painting of the waterfront, the central waterfront, before the buildings were removed. Where exactly this painting will be cited has yet to be determined. Committee recommends three to zero to accept the very generous gift.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is accepted with gratitude. Any other orders?
Motion to receive and file Communication one thirty-five, letter from the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Oh, there it is.
Nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vanna.
Who tore that down?
Did someone say, "Thank you, Vanna"? No, was that? Where are we, Charlie?
We're doing a receive and file Communication one thirty-five.
And was there a second?
Second.
Counselor Zede. Discussion.
I don't think it's necessary.
Counselor Janta.
I'm just, I'm just going to throw out an idea, as we were listening to the different folks that work downtown talk about the long scary walk to our desolate parking lots, and I, I understand exactly what they're talking about, having to walk, especially in the winter, the parking lots are empty, not well-lit at times. It is a dangerous walk. One of the thoughts that occurred to me, and I'm just sort of throwing this out for the administration too, is having employee permits for zones. So if you worked at Interlock, your employee parking permit would be the garage, because that would be the closest to you. If you worked over on the Souflee side of town, then your parking would be closer to those lots, and if you worked over in Prince Place, your employee parking would be over there. Sort of slicing the downtown up into four pieces and getting employee parking close to the employers, so nobody has that walk. I think if we could spread it out effectively, we would still obviously have parking for our consumers, but we would make it much safer for our employees, so, just a thought to throw out there.
Good idea. Something for Park and Advisory, I would think. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and filing this letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Tantar.
Motion to approve Order ninety, parking garage rates.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tantar.
The committee recommends three to nothing that we approve. This was an idea that came from the city's Parking Advisory Committee, as was mentioned earlier. It calls for, originally, we had intended to charge eighty dollars per month for parking in the garage, employee parking in the garage. That was based on the parking consultant recommendation. John Burke, from his experience in other communities, he had suggested that about fifty percent of the normal rate was the going rate in other communities. So, if an employee worked forty hours a week, four weeks a month, that would be hundred sixty dollars, half of that is eighty. The committee agrees with the chamber's recommendation and the sponsor's recommendation, that we reduce that to sixty, making it the same rate as resident parking in the garage, and we, and we recommend that by a vote of three to nothing. I'd also say, in light of some of the discussion tonight, is that John Burke, in his, in his parking study, suggested that these early rates get established, but that be understood that we needed to pay very careful attention to what was happening with parking in the city as the garage opens and it rolls out. We might, we really need to get a sense of what the different demand will be in different places in the city, and I, and I'm not going to speak for the Parking Advisory Committee, but I would strongly suggest that they, as they review our experience after the garage opens, that they be open to other possibilities, and then bring it before us for changes in rates. But for this first request we have, which is to reduce sixty dollars, we recommend approval. I want to also note that we looked at the pro forma, and we looked at the financial aspects. This would result in about a six thousand dollar decrease over the year in the revenue estimated for the first year. So it's really, it's not a major decrease in revenue. We did talk a little bit about lowering it more than that. I think that's a more complex discussion, because it would be difficult to lower the employee permit and make it lower than the residential permit for use, but that's, that's another discussion to be held. At least we can accomplish this now.
Thank you, Counselor. Did the committee make a recommendation?
Yes, three to zero to approve.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you.
And Counselor Zede.
I'm going to stand in favor of this, mostly along the lines of the counselor from Ward Four indicating that there's further discussion out there to be had, and I think we, we hear, and I certainly do hear and understand, the concerns of the parking counselor from Ward Five. I think that's a great idea to take a look at the different areas of town and parking and so on and so forth. But I do think we have to start somewhere. I think that your concerns and your comments have been heard, and certainly will continue to be discussed, and I just wanted to put that out there to you.
Thank you. Counselor Zede.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, as a sponsor, I hope that you will support this. So, yeah, it solves some things, but not all things, as is often the case. What it solves is that I, you know, it's something I identified last time when this went to committee. We, we still have a pretty big gap between our existing employee pass and what the garage is, and we've had many discussions here about, is the garage different, or is it just part of our parking inventory, and should it be treated that way? That's a debate. That's an ongoing debate. This is a step in the right direction, I think, which creates a little bit more equity with that hundred and sixty dollar. I heard hundred and forty. My recollection's one sixty. I remind counselors that we tried to raise it at one point very recently. I believe the proposal was somewhere around two hundred, two twenty, and that this council trimmed that back to one sixty. So, we are trying to find where that balance point is, and this sixty dollars doesn't come close to the one sixty a year, but it's better, and I agree that there are other issues, and I would like to identify just a couple of those. One is, we certainly have not adjudicated the question about the limit on the number of passes, and I know that's a big question, and we talked about that briefly at Park and Advisory. That's a big question. We talked about that at Budget and Finance as well, that's a big question. And another one is the longevity of, how long can one stay in the, in the garage? Whether it is on an employee pass or is it on hourly, because I think there's general consensus that this isn't for mothballing cars. The garage isn't for storing your nineteen beautiful Corvette or whatever that you're going to put in there for, for winter. So, we have a lot more work to do, but I hope that everybody will take this as it's meant. It's a gesture, something important, brings it in line with employees, with residents, and something we have to continue to talk about, and with a de minimis impact on the finances, as, as was presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Is there anything else, Counselor?
That's it, Mr. President. From Budget and Finance.
Let's move on to education. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Janta? I think you have a handout, don't you?
Yeah, I gave, I gave everybody a copy of this PowerPoint that was presented to us at Joint Ed. This is a follow-up from last month. So last month, the superintendent gave us an outlook on his budget. He was about a hundred thousand dollars upside down. He's able, he's been able to remedy that, and as we kind of journey through this, he's nice, he gives you a five-year, five-year history of all the money that's been budgeted to the school system over the last five years. It's, as we mentioned last time, it's really well laid out. It gives you revenues and expenses, FY nineteen, FY twenty. He even gets down to budgeting by, by each program. So he really gives us a lot of, a lot of detail with the information that he gives us in these presentations, breaks things down by school. And then one of the things that I found very interesting on this is, they show us the projected class sizes. Because as you can imagine, if your, your kindergarten group is, or your first grade group is, say, large, but you're, and then your second grade group moving on, they're, they have a disparity in size. You have to move teachers around, so you might need an extra first grade teacher that you didn't need the year before, because you have more kids coming up. That's sort of the idea behind it. So he kind of shows us where he is currently, and then the proposed, and you can see the shifts in numbers, which, you know, align with the number of kids they expect to come in, which is really a nice thing there. He shows us his priority list. You can see I put a little note on the handout. Everything on Priority One is actually in the budget, and then Priority Two and Three are things they hope to fund. We've been through this over the years, as money comes along, whether we do some cutting on our end, we're able to fulfill some of their budget items. So, and at the very end, he gives us how he reached the three point nine percent, and that was what their increase was. So something good for you to take a look at, at home. On April tenth, from eight to ten AM, the sophomores at Newburyport High School will have the opportunity to participate in a career event fair, and there are going to be panels of Newburyport residents that will be there to talk to the kids about what their opportunities are in the future. This is a collaborative event between local business volunteers, the Newburyport Education Foundation, Newburyport High School, and Anna Jakes Hospital. So this is a nice thing for the kids to do, and gives them, you know, a sort of a vision of what the future could be for them. You know, I always ask the same questions when these things come up. I'm in the trade, so I always have to ask, are there going to be any trades represented there? I'm not sure that's the case, but we'll have to make sure that's the case next year. And then I always ask if the military's going to be there, because many, many folks that I graduated from high school with that are still friends of mine are career military people. So these are folks that joined the military in nineteen eighty-seven and are lieutenant colonels now. So it's really interesting to, to see that career path, too. And then the last thing that I gave you was the skill-based learning, teaching assessment and grading, and this is, this is just a project that the school's working on, and I'll just read you a little blurb, which will kind of explain it to you. It says, "In a skill-based classroom, teachers help students recognize the essential skills that they are growing during any given lesson. Students have tools, reflect times, and feedback, and opportunities that allow them to track and celebrate their progress on those skills. As a student, you no longer wait until a test to discover how well you're doing. You watch and talk about your growth during the lesson." So this is an initiative they're doing right now at the Newburyport Schools that they're pretty excited about, and from where we're drilled, the faculty's pretty excited to participate in this. Thank you.
Very well. For, thank you. Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, could I just add one, one other thing?
Sure.
In the past, the, we have passed the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, with capital expenditures in the school system, and the school committee had not reviewed them, right? And that was a little bit of a problem in the past. This year, there was a change, and the school committee has vetted all of the capital improvements and made, and supported them. So everything that you see in the Capital Improvement Program has been reviewed by the school committee, which is a great thing. And just overall, I found the transparency in this budget to be, to be really remarkable, and very happy to, happy to see it.
Very well. General Government, there's nothing in committee. License and permits?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Planning and Development?
Motion to remove Order twenty-four.
Second. Motion to remove Order twenty-four. Very well. Seconded. On a special act. I wish the clerk could read that one for us.
Read the special act?
Yeah. Not in its entirety. Let's get the Reader's Digest version.
First of all, there's the original, which was submitted four-nine, two thousand eighteen, which is co-sponsored by Councilors Zede, Junta, Earls, and Devlin, there, which goes on for a number of pages. Essentially, that the city will submit a home rule petition to the General Court to enact a special act, and for the purposes of dissolving the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, AKA NRA, provided the General Court may make hierarchical errors, changes, if you will. And that's an overly brief synopsis, but the act itself goes on for a number of pages.
Can you summarize the differences between the act as it was originally proposed and the item that's coming out of committee? Have you made, yes. Counselor Agnew?
If I may, so I mean, the motion on the floor is just to take, take the original order out of committee, that's it, and then I would make a motion to amend.
Very well. You didn't do it in committee.
Put in a new one. But if we want to have a debate on taking it out, because there was some question, I'm happy to engage in that. I like to hear from other councils.
No, your motion was to bring this order out of committee, right?
Yes, it's a motion to remove Order twenty-four, which includes proposed amendment.
Is there a second on that? I'll second it.
Counselor Zede heard it. I believe Counselor Zede seconded it, yeah. Further discussion of this order.
Of taking the order out.
Taking the order out.
It is out. We need to vote. It's not, it's not out. We haven't got a vote yet.
The confusion, Mr. President, may be, this was not on the list in the consent agenda.
Very well. Thank you, Mayor.
Was it?
So it is the motion to take this order out of committee.
Correct.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, I see a hand for discussion. Counselor Janta.
Well, I mean, I'll just throw it out there. I mean, before we take this out of committee, I mean, we've had a number of people that have told us that we're, we're rushing this decision. I mean, I've, I've written this numerous times from different folks here, so, the question about taking it out of committee, for folks that are at home or watching, we had a meeting on Thursday where this amendment was talked about for the first time, and now we're, we're looking to take this order out so we can amend it on the floor, which I think is a substantial change to this original, and I'd just like to air everything out as we go along, because I think this is a big deal.
You'll have the opportunity, right now it is a motion to remove the item as it was originally sent to committee, out. So you'll have the opportunity to discuss a possible amendment to it when that's, when that's.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, if the, the weight of actually taking that out is the fact that it's going to substantially change. That's all.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Khan.
Sorry, yes, and I know this is.
On the motion to remove from committee.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I also, to take it out of committee, I know that at the committee meeting, it didn't get recommended out of committee, so I wanted to add that point as well. So this would be an effort made by the chair with the support from a non-committee member to bring it out, which is okay in our rules, but I just want to make a point that it wasn't really, I guess, approved out of committee, so that, I just want to make sure procedurally, in my understanding, is that what we're doing at the discretion of the chair.
One moment. Counselor Agnew, would you like to respond?
If I may, the, the motion on the floor is merely to remove an order that was introduced three hundred and sixty-four days ago. I want to be precise on that. The sponsors of that order were Zede, Junta, Earls, and Devlin. I haven't done anything about the amendment of what's in the packet. That, that's all. If we want to have a debate over the whole shooting match now, we can. I'm happy to do that. But again, I'm not, I haven't made a motion to amend. So, again, all I'm trying to bring out of committee right now, tonight, is something that's been in committee for one day less than a year.
Thank you, Councilor Zied.
Yeah, long story short, if you don't support this coming out of committee because you're worried it may get amended, that's a procedural move only. That's a tactic. It's a procedural move. The people on the camera should hear us speak about this transparently and publicly, and not unlike an issue we had last year, which was pretty contentious and made the same exact argument. We should not send home people, send people home tonight without letting them hear us. What happens after this, I don't know. But I don't think it'd be fair or sensible for us to say, nope, we're not going to talk about this tonight. See you later in an untelevised committee meeting.
Thank you. Further discussion of the motion to remove an item out of committee. Councilor Tantar?
Really, it's just a, really, a point of order. Rule 7F, right, reads that during a meeting of the council, the chair of the committee may remove any matter from such committee to bring it to the floor by discussion. So, I think the word to council was in order.
Correct. Hearing further discussion, all those in favor of removing this item from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The chairs in doubt, we'll have a roll call, please.
Motion to remove order 24, Councilor Devlin?
Yes.
Councilor Earls?
Yes.
Councilor Agaman?
Yes.
Councilor Jenta?
No.
Councilor Khan?
No.
Council O'Brien is absent. Councilor Shan?
No.
Councilor Tantar?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Zie?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
That is seven needing six to remove matters out on the floor.
The matter is on? Okay. Motion to amend by substituting the proposed amendment dated April 4, 2019. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded by Council Vogel. Discussion of the motion to substitute. Council Agaman?
Okay. So, here's what's changed in 364 days. Why, why the rush really is the first question. The rush is, as you heard the mayor say, we don't know what the NRA is going to do next. And I'll back up. So, we did have involvement of the NRA directly in about a year and a half, two years, however you want to measure it, of the ad hoc. And that resulted in a 10-nothing vote by this body saying, okay, here's the deal that we're going to do. And then, the next thing that happened was March of 2018. So, March 2018, which was another 10 months later, the NRA voted to grant the lands out without following any procurement, without any urban renewal plan. They got a letter from, of objection from the city solicitor. We then had confirmation hearings for the holdover appointments. I want to emphasize again, these are holdover appointments. So, and we, we had extensive testimony on that. At that confirmation hearing, the testimony from the candidate, Mr. Uleg, was that there was no responsibility to the city council, that the resolution of May 2017 were merely guidelines that he might take into account, that property held by the NRA was private property, not public property, and so on. We also, the committee took a great many of letters from some of the people that spoke tonight, including Mr. Harris, Ms. Heath, and Ms. Ketchum, all saying, do not affirm any members, either Mr. Sansir or Mr. Uleg, because they've demonstrated that they don't have the best interest of the public in mind. We then regrouped. The city council did not approve those appointments, but under state law, those members hold over. As you heard Mr. Uleg say during a public comment, I had a private conversation with him where I said, well, why don't you stay until the end of the fiscal year? So, that'd be July 1. Let's wrap this up. That didn't happen. In the fall, some of us as private citizens, because again, we knew that the city council probably didn't have the stomach for it, protested very publicly about giving land away free and clear to a private organization, the Maritime Society, over which the city has no control, unlike, unlike the Waterfront Trust, by the way, which we do have control over. That involved a lot of private time, letter writing, pressure. Again, we were told that we had no say in it as city councilors, but happily, there was movement. And the deed that finally came out did have restrictions on the use of that public property that benefit the city. And because of that, many of us gave in. So, here we are. It's, it's April. It's been a, almost a year exactly since the last dissolution order came in. We had hearings on that dissolution order in 2018. We didn't go forward with it. And as I said at the Thursday meeting, the concern was there was mistrust that the city during the time that they held the property before they gave it to the Waterfront Trust would betray the 2017 resolution and do something with the land. So, this time around, what I'm proposing is we dedicate it under Article 97. I'm a little confused by the objection to Article 97 and the reservation of public parking. Article 97 is about as hallowed a reservation of park and conservation land as there is. Also, the language about reserving public parking, not only did I copy that verbatim from the stipulation of the parties in 1980, which again, I want to say is 39 years ago, and we're still here. That's exactly the language that was used by the parties then, to accommodate parking that was accessory to the park. But also, one of the objections during, to the May 17 resolution that we did was that maybe we didn't want to eliminate the parking on the waterfront. So, although the city council had been confer, had been committed to that, and Mr. Salami was involved at that time as the rep on the ad hoc committee, but he didn't, he didn't attend every meeting. And in fact, the, the meeting that occurred in 2016 where we covered the removal of spaces was attended by Mr. Sidford and Mr. Uleg. And they identified the spaces that they would take off. And then, there were some, particularly Ms. Heath, who said, maybe we don't want to take the parking off. That's what I'm alluding to. But that's been our policy consistently. So, this is an attempt to keep that option open, to keep some parking on the waterfront and not eliminate it altogether, in line with the language that lawyers agreed to for all parties 39 years ago. Now, let's get to the parking on the waterfront. It came up recently. The NRA announced that they, they don't feel bound, as I say, in any way, by what was negotiated in May 2017. And therefore, they're not going to remove any parking this summer, even though, as we've often said, you know, that is what the basis of doing the parking garage was to remove parking for the waterfront and move the ball forward. Why now? Well, again, we have another meeting of the NRA that's going to take place in 24 hours. The agenda was not posted till this morning, even though it was due on Friday. So, we had no idea of what they were going to be up to until we saw it this morning. Still don't really know what they're going to do. There is a very real danger that they will give the land to the Waterfront Trust or who knows who without the proper protections. So, the idea was to remove that threat. The timing, why the rush, is again, they're meeting tomorrow. Also, it is true that getting things through the legislature, you don't have to believe it, but the sooner you get it in before budget season, the more chance you have of getting it through. And I, I don't believe that it's truly a rush, given what we've been through. Pick a number, 39 years to the stipulation, 10 months since things were supposed to be wrapped up according to the NRA, you know, two years since our resolution, four years since the ad hoc was formed, whatever, pick a number. That's the point. And I also want to clarify something on the money. There's no interest in taking the NRA's money if they wants to be, if people want to earmark it for a park, that's fine by me. But the NRA is not bringing anything to the table. Remember, you know, Mr. Strand spoke about how they had a plan. They have no money, other than that corpus of cash that's sitting there. That's it. They have no staff. They're not adding anything. And instead, they've made it clear that they consider themselves autonomous and don't answer to anybody. And I think that's very dangerous. So, that's why I sponsored this, to put an end to it. And again, people seem to have short memories. A year ago, many of the people who spoke against this dissolution order thought of the NRA as, as a threat to them. But now, that's all changed, and I don't understand that. You know, there it is. If you wanted to continue it for three weeks, I'm not sure what you would gain. We do have an attorney here, Mr. Lyman, who I just met. He can answer all the questions you have about Article 97, about earmarking money, whatever you want. Another thing I want to make clear, I would actually, at this point, welcome litigation. You know, I, I expected many people to say, and we're going to sue you. Please do. You know, maybe we'll get somewhere that way. You know, because we're just spinning our wheels. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, Councilor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to be sued. I just want to tell that to everyone. So, gosh, a lot of things were brought up. And I think, as someone who did not want to bring this up, is, one of the reasons was I felt like in committee, we could kind of, we could refine some of the details that were in this amendment. As you may have heard, on April 4th is when we had the meeting with this amendment. Until then, no one else has seen it. So, I know that we talked about how long the dissolution of the NRA has been being talked about. I don't at all argue with that. I think that has been a topic of conversation for many years, as I've talked to people who were involved in this way before I was. My issue is mainly, and I always go back to this, is doing things the right way. And what I mean by that is, you know, if people want to earmark money for the park, it's fine with the council from War II. Well, that's not anywhere like earmarked. So, there's a lot of gaps, and there's a lot of things kind of missing in terms of really kind of fine tuning all the details on how this is going to work. And I think that's one thing that I just want to say, my hesitancy in supporting and going, moving forward with this, is I do want to see us spend time in committee. And I know it's not televised, but maybe we could make sure that we come up with a way. We've done that before where we've, with the community forum on marijuana, I was able to get Port Media to come and, and record it. So, maybe, why not have a meeting with more people and, and really work through what would refine this so that when it does go before and we do dissolve the NRA, we've looked at all the aspects related to it and talked with Waterfront Trust and the other parties involved. So, at the meeting, at the planning and development meeting, Waterfront Trust wasn't there either. So, there were some parties missing. So, I just want to make sure we do it the right way, which is one, that's the key reason why I'm not going to support this, unless I hear, maybe the legal can answer some of the questions we do have. But I just wanted to preface with that statement. Thank you.
I believe Council Zied and then Council Shan. Go ahead, please. Council Shan.
Thank you. As a member of the Planning and Development Committee that wasn't at the meeting Thursday night, I, I did hear a whole lot about it over the weekend. Sounded like it was a great time. My concern is, an amendment was brought out that no one knew about, and of course, we wouldn't know about it on Thursday night because we can't. But, you know, four days doesn't seem like due process. We, you hear about it on Thursday night. We didn't see it in writing until Friday when we got our packet. You don't know what you don't know. And you need time to think about these things. And I appreciate that we have a lawyer here tonight to answer questions, but I think we did hear a lot from the community tonight, and it's the same questions we had over the weekend. It's like, you don't have a plan delineated in these amendments to address the money. You don't have a plan to delineate where the parking money that the NRA lots have right now would go to afterwards. And you don't have a plan to say that we're going to go build a park. So, with those things, those are the kind of amendments we would do in committee. And I think that is where it should be done. So, I don't plan on supporting this.
Thank you. Council Zied?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I have several comments, some prepared remarks I want to make. So, first of all, I want to just expand on the War II councilor's timeline a little bit. So, I, I made my list, and I tried to go back as well and pull some of the old orders and ordinances and communications and everything in between. So, the settlement was in 1980. I wasn't born yet, so that's a long time ago. You know, and so, then you've got all this time that sort of passes in the middle. And then, really, what I wanted to focus on is the last, you know, last several years because there's been a lot of activity. In May of 2014, I was able to find all the Newburyport Daily News articles about the charrette the mayor held. Maybe forgot about that. And the conclusion was pretty resounding, let's have an open waterfront. Then, sort of some time elapsed. And then, in July 13th of 2015, then-councilor Cronin, current-councilor Junta, and Herzog, former, proposed a dissolution order. I was able to get a copy of that. That sort of, you know, hung out for a while, if you will. And then, the ad hoc was formed by then-city council president Tom O'Brien towards the end of 2015. And I want to read to you what the, what was the goal of the ad hoc when it was formed because it had, it had a charge. It was to develop policies and objectives regarding a long-term vision on the central waterfront, including number of parking spaces, land ownership, and operational and maintenance responsibilities subject to the full council approval. Every time I stand up, I hear that same exact recommendation, that we should have, we should have a committee about this. We have somebody talk about this. That's what was formed in 2015. And I, I would say that if we formed one today, we'd form it with the exact same mission statement. So, hopefully, we'd get a little further. There were 11 people on it. Five were city councilors that could voted, could vote, pardon me. The other members were a committee on the open waterfront, one seat, chamber, one seat, harbor commission, one seat, redevelopment authority, one seat, waterfront trustee, one seat, and public settler, one seat. There were 11 people. I looked back at the makeup. Seven of those original members are no longer involved in their respective board or on the council. So, substantial turnover, and that's just from 2015. The ad hoc continued its work in 2016. One of the biggest things I remember from my time was sitting at the senior center voting on a goalpost document. We said, let's try and add some structure to this. And I proposed some timelines. Some who were there at the time may remember that. And it basically prescribed a, a little bit of a timeline to give some structure with a dissolution vote for 12/31/2016. So, that went by the wayside. Then, then the ad hoc kind of went dark. I, I was deeply frustrated at that time, but we stopped our work because there was a push to, to let the parties kind of work on their own outside of the ad hoc. So, we stopped. We came rearing back in May of 2017, and this is extremely crucial to what, where I'm going to go with this. The ad hoc essentially produced two different options for the waterfront, two different plans that were in writing and submitted to the city council. So, I don't think tonight's the night to say I take offense to anything, but when, when people say the council never has a plan, or we don't have a plan, or we have no idea what we're talking about, the ad hoc, the two reports that came out of the ad hoc were two specific plans, in my opinion, more specific than anything else. You know why they were more specific? Because they addressed the money. And I've seen this thing fall down on the money several times, and I think others would agree. It's two things. It's always land and money, and usually, you fall down on one or the other. And so, let me just summarize for everybody who wasn't here or for those who are watching what those two plans were. The first one said that the city, the city is going to take full responsibility for the park. It will fund the park. It will build the park. It will maintain the park at its expense. It will not call out any specific revenue sources to that end, but it will basically will legally accept that responsibility. If you think that's light, you're wrong. You have no idea how this board, we, we argue about $20 if we have something in front of us. And that was the trade-off, was that the city would take that responsibility on its shoulders. It would not designate any specific revenue for that purpose, other than the full faith and credit of the city of Newburyport and its people, which, by the way, we use to also sign bonds. So, it's a pretty substantial. And we even went so far as to say, we'd have a substantial document that would define what maintenance is, because at the time, the question was, what's maintenance? You guys are going to let the grove grass grow too long and let all the benches fall apart? We had a 100-page document, I remember, from the city of Cambridge or Boston, something on a deal that was made. And it said, you know, the blades of grass will be no longer than like three and seven, eight inches, and they'll be mowed, and the benches will be replaced on this schedule. That plan met a buzzsaw, for lack of a better term. That plan met a buzzsaw, for lack of a better term, and the arguments were, don't trust the city, lack of autonomy, or it breaks the waterfront trust, won't be able to act autonomously of the city. The city is typically referred to as the bad actor in the situation. So we came up with a second option, and that was the one I had proposed, and that was the autonomy plan it's sometimes referred to, wherein the city would basically designate specific revenue flows to the waterfront trust, and the waterfront trust would take those and go ahead. Now, the trade-off was, yes, the city let off the gas on that promise that it would build the park. You can't have it both ways, I think is the phrase that goes with that one. So there was money dedicated from parking that was on a schedule that would grow as the park grew. There was money from, you know, from other sources. There was current money the waterfront trust had, and you can go and read that. It's memorialized in our 5/30/17 packet. So those were two options. So I do want to say that if the question is, what's the city council's plan? Ours is in the books, and we agreed on the second plan. That was a unanimous decision, 10 to nothing. And in the end, we had agreed that the waterfront trust, for example, would get 90% of the parking revenues when the park was fully built out. So that ad hoc policy didn't go anywhere. It also said that the City Council supported the city receiving the Custom House Maritime Museum land, and then it would then further lease it, which we reaffirmed, reaffirm, affirm, affirmed, which is the fourth time that we didn't want that to happen. And I don't say that to bring up something that I don't want, wish to rehash, just to show the pattern of how this is typically gone. Okay, so that's a little bit of my history. That's how I view the history. What's wrong with the current status quo? I think that's the next quote. What's wrong? Well, what's wrong with this? Why don't we just go ahead and let this go on and continue? I think, historically, the Redevelopment Authority as an institution should be looked at very positively. I think most people acknowledge that it had a huge role in urban renewal. But today, it's woefully broken, and it's an institutional problem, not a personal problem. And by institutional, what I mean is, it has really outlived its original purpose and usefulness, which is to redevelop and to follow an urban renewal plan, which I left out of my timeline, but that expired back in 2005. So I had a resident email me and say, you know, the Redevelopment Authority is supposed to just follow its charter. Well, what's its charter? Its charter is derived from an urban renewal plan, and that urban renewal plan starts in this room, and it goes through this body. Not any one of us personally, but it goes through this body, and it goes to a mayor, and that gives you the bumpers on the bowling alley. And then you careen down that alley, hoping to get to a certain place at the end. Yes, with great latitude, but not with unfettered control or power. So the urban renewal plan has expired. So that's one reason. That expired in 2005. Probably should have done this back then. That's the first thing. Second thing is, you know, as the Ward 2 Counselor mentioned, the question is, would the NRA just transfer the land to the trust? And I know that in the public, there's some support for that. I would probably challenge you to think that an unfettered transfer to the Newburyport Waterfront Trust will not lead to a park. And there's a couple of reasons why. And if our goal is to get to a park, we need to pick the best avenue to a park. The waterfront trust is made up of volunteers, and we should all be appreciative of their time and the time they've put in. But that's not something, a volunteer board or commission probably can't execute a multimillion-dollar project. And they can't execute that project without the help of the city. I think one of the settlers said it best. No one party can do this. So pushing it to the trust and thinking that that is, you know, that's going to lead to a park, I think is folly. And I think would actually yield a worse situation, because what you're going to end up with, if you want to talk about the numbers, and I'm always happy to, a very feedless, feedback loop, wherein you never have enough money to build the park, but you do have a lot of money to maintain it, but you never have the big money to do cleanups, to do things like that, things that you can't get away with just closing up with an AUL. You end up basically stuck. So I think that's a consideration that needs to be made. And the idea behind the ad hoc, pardon me, was to bring those parties to the table and give all of them some incentive to work together, some incentive to have some autonomy, and some incentive to get us to the end goal. So the current situation status quo is not acceptable. It's not acceptable to me. It hasn't been acceptable to me for some time. I think I've been clear on that. I felt strongly about ending the appointments, and at that time, I said I really didn't want to appoint anybody to the NRA, because I felt as an institution, it has moved on. All right, so now, as I go forward, I hope that I won't say any specific party, and I hope that I'll refer to us as "we," and I will try my best, because one of the things that's been so desperately broken with this is, it's always about us, or them, or me, or we, instead of just all of us together. So you have, and we had this in committee last week about liability and who holds line. Just think of us as all the city. All of us are the city. The waterfront trust is part of the city. The Newburyport Redevelopment Authority is part of the city. City Council is part of the city. Mayor's part of the city. Sorry, we're all on the same team, unfortunately. Maybe we can break off into separate teams later, but we are all on the same team. And I think that this policy is the right policy, because I think this is the one that's going to deliver a park. So if that's really where we're trying to go, then here's how we get there. Number one is, Article 97 does deliver on park protection. That's my feeling. The people shall have a right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise, and the natural scenic historic and aesthetic qualities of their environment, and the protection of the people and their right to conservation, development, and utilization, and so on and so forth. Yes, Article 97, it takes a high bar to get, and it takes a high bar to remove. Can it be removed? Yes, it can. Is that a high bar? If there are 50-some-odd removals of Article 97 protections, who initiated that? The people of that community. And that's who owns this land. It is the residents that own the land. It is the residents that control us, who's our boss. I know who mine are. They are the residents out there that are waiting for us to deliver on a park. Number two is, I believe Article 97 protection may be in some way stronger than the protection a trust could provide on not developing on the property. And that may take some people by surprise. But the Newburyport Waterfront Trust documents, in case you haven't read them closely, do not exclude or preclude building. And that's been something that I think, in the last couple of weeks or months, people take for granted that we're done with that part of the debate. I don't think we're done. We're not done with that debate. There are people that still want to build on the waterfront. I'm not one of them, but I want to move on from that part of the debate and close it. So to me, Article 97 means an open waterfront, a high bar for protection, definitive, concrete, written policy, and something that we shouldn't take for granted. Couple more things, and I promise I'll sit down. This is one of those Newburyport things. The waterfront is one of those Newburyport things. It defies logic sometimes, it defies gravity, I think, in physics as well. But this is, this is an interesting opportunity, I think. And I don't think it's one that we should take lightly. We don't come to this point very often, here on the City Council, or anywhere on the central waterfront, and maybe never on Waterfront West, who knows? But this is, this is a time to be on the right side of history, I think, which is to get this thing protected, something that many have fought for for a very long time. And I hope that you will support it. There is one thing that I think is missing, and I acknowledge from the public and so forth, which is, we haven't resolved in this order, the money or the plan to build a park. And I will take a stab at both of those, and, you know, through my recommendation for two friendly amendments to that that is on the floor. And I'm just going to throw them out there, so we can stop talking about how they don't exist in the document. Number one is, the city shall reserve, this would be inserted as a new section number four, "The city shall reserve any monies transferred to the city pursuant to section two above, in addition to no less than," I'm going to say X percent for the moment, "of any ongoing meter revenues generated from parking on the land solely for the purposes of design, construction, maintenance, or operation of an extended waterfront park as designated in this order under Article 97. Such funds shall be placed into a separated designated receipts reserve for appropriation fund for these purposes as improvements to the public realm." The second one would be to insert a new section nine, which states, "The City of Newburyport commits to designing, funding, and building a waterfront park in accordance with the will of residents of the City of Newburyport. On a best efforts basis, the design shall be consistent with the principles and references documented in Communication 67 dated 5/30/17, the ad hoc Central Waterfront Committee report agreed upon by the Newburyport City Council." So let me just tell you what those two mean in plain English. Number one, there are two pieces of money to argue about on the Redevelopment Authority side. There is the money they have in their coffers, somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars, and there is the ongoing money that's generated from parking. What I am proposing is that the money that is already sitting in that account be designated immediately for a park, whatever that may mean, design, construction, et cetera. And that we designate some percentage of the ongoing revenues for that same purpose. And the reason I said X percent, I'll talk about in a minute. The second one is to address a second question, which is, we have done some work on some design, including on the Redevelopment Authority, and that's what that communication refers to. There are already references to the plan there. There's discussion about the loop of the rail trail, and so there has been work, and I think we should honor some of that work that has been done. Now let me leave you with the last piece on the percentage. There are opinions in this room, I believe, that range from 0 to 150% on this number, right? So I just want to say that it is time for us to get to brass tacks and basically figure out what that number should be. I am very open to a discussion on this. Last week, I said 20%. I know there's some commitment, there's some interest in much higher percentage. I'm going to let that one go for a moment and let folks discuss it, but this is how I think we answer what I think is missing from this order, which is, how do you fund a park? And are you showing a commitment to build a park? And we owe that as part of this. But other than that, I do not think the order is defective in any way. I think it addresses the protection of the land, and if we can get to the money part, then we can close this out.
Let me ask the Counselor, do, well, first, have you made a motion?
Yes, so moved, and I can provide the...
Can you provide the clerk with those motions?
I'll second the motion.
And Counsel Jenta has seconded both motions?
Yes.
All right.
Just one point of order.
Thank you.
Do you want to put in a percentage for the purpose of the motion?
I'll make that. I'll make a suggestion. 100%.
For discussion, let's do it.
Is that a friendly amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Are we doing, point of order? Are we doing...
Just a moment, Counselor. So we have...
Point of order. Are we discussing both amendments?
Excuse me, Counsel. Let me rule on what he has just done first. What we have is a pair of motions, and seconded with a friendly amendment or not.
Did you accept my friendly amendment?
Yes.
That's before us now. Counsel Vogel.
I'm just, point of order. What are we discussing?
We will discuss now the proposed amendment to the motion that Counsel Eigerman previously made.
But there's two amendments.
There are two of them. Yes, there are.
Which one are we discussing?
Well, let's talk first about the designation of money to the purpose he expressed, which was to build a park. And at this point, I'm going to ask for the advice of Counsel on those motions, because I think that might frame some of our debate.
And we just made ourselves two and a half hours.
Thank you, Mr. President. RJ Lyman, residential, I live at 852 Hale Street in Beverly, and for work, I work in Boston. But I love this city. Thank you very much for having me here today. Maybe if you, it'd be easier, because President, if you or through you, one of the Counselors wanted to direct a particular element of the questions to me, so I don't sort of occupy too much space.
Let me, on behalf of the Counsel, then, unless Counsel Zied would like to. I think an item of discussion at the Planning and Development Committee last week was whether or not it was within the scope of our authority to designate funds for a specific purpose in connection with the dissolution proposal. Do I have that right? I think so. Sure.
If you receive, as section two of the proposed home rule amendment would have you do, all real and personal property belonging to the Redevelopment Authority upon its dissolution, it is within your plenary authority to do with it as you wish. If I could answer the question that follows from that, it would be extraordinarily unusual for it to be done in this form, to place it inside the home rule petition. The reason is simple. It's not a difference of opinion as to what the outcome should be. That's certainly not, for me, it is not. But rather, the process, if there is a change, if 100% is the correct percentage, I would say, change the hypothetical, let's assume you reach the conclusion that 50% is the correct percentage, and later on, you decide it should be 100%. You have to go back to the legislature to change that. So having Counsel orders, upon which the submission of the home rule petition to the legislature is contingent, that accomplish the same purpose, might be a better way for the control to remain inside this building in perpetuity, rather than to delegate that authority to the state legislature. But as for tying the two together, that would be wholly within your province to do.
All right. I believe we're going to have some questions of Counsel. Is that where you're headed, Counsel?
No.
Counsel Devil?
The only part of my comments to reserve some time later to speak on, but that's one point I wanted to touch on to everybody who said that they wanted more, and they wanted to discuss this more in committee. This is, should be a narrowly tailored document. We are asking the legislature to dissolve the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. They created it. We're asking them to dissolve it. We don't need to stick in all these extraneous details. We're reverting this back to the city, and what we forget about, I've said this several times up here, as has the Counsel from Ward 1, we forget about, sometimes in the Counsel, we tend to say yes to whatever's presented to us. We are the city. We are part of that control, so we can do what we want with this property afterwards. Everything has to come through us. The problem now, this is why I signed up for this the first time, and this is why I would have signed up for it. I actually offered to the Ward 2 Counselor to be on the resolution again, to share some of the heat, because we, the biggest complaint I get from residents about the waterfront is, why aren't you doing something about this? I'm like, I can't, we don't know. I can advocate, but I can't, it's not, and they are befuddled why it's not coming through us.
I'm going to ask you to leave your comments to the amendments.
That's, that's...
Thank you.
So I would be very careful about adding to this.
Thank you. Further discussion of the amendments proposed by Counsel Zied. Counsel Jenta.
Question, can the, can parking money that's being derived out of this NRA, are the two NRA parking lots, can they be directed to a certain kitty of money?
Yeah, once the money has come to the city, assuming the home rule petition is adopted, yes, you can do that. I should hasten to add, if I might, Mr. President, there are 51 cities and towns in the Commonwealth that have substantial amounts of oceanfront land, all regulated as public and private tidings. And of those, other than you, Fall River, and to a certain extent, in relation to its relationship with Massport, the city of Boston, are the only two which have retained an independent body, whether wholly under their control or a co-equal organ of government. I'm not sure I'm saying anything other than giving that to you for a bit of context, because the complexities are things that sometimes cities find more trouble than they're worth. But that's really not an opinion, it's rather, it's an observation.
Thank you. Counsel Vogel.
I think the question before us is these two amendments, and it seems as though we've got direct and clear guidance, that we should not pass these amendments, that we should take them up after we discuss whether or not we go forward with the home rule petition. So I stand not in favor of the amendments, if that's what we're discussing. I urge you to know on both of them.
Thank you. Counsel Eigerman, and then Counsel Zied.
First, on the merits. I support them on the merits. So the only question is whether they're inside this dissolution order, or whether they're something in parallel. But I'm the one who's saying, I do think we need to get moving, so I would support the amendment if that's what's going to get this moving. Again, I don't want there to be any doubt that there's some trickery afoot, that we're going to steal the money. So I would support the amendment.
Counsel Zied, and then Counsel Jenta.
Well, it's fun to do this live, I think, because I didn't hear what you heard. I didn't hear that we shouldn't put this in. I heard that it may be better to place it in a separate order and incorporate it by reference, but to speak directly to that, that is often the case with this ad hoc, pardon me, with this waterfront discussion, is that kind of thing cuts both ways. Some prefer the higher bar of putting it into the Home Rule petition, such that, yes, changing it is harder, and others may prefer that it's easier. I suppose that depends if you agree with 100% or not. So I think what we suggest, what I would suggest is, we've got to get down to the details. What is the, what is the percentage? Assuming there is consensus around putting at least some of this money towards a park, which I believe there should be, let's get down to what the percentage should be, and that may inform your decision about whether it is logical to place it in to the Home Rule petition, or it's better to leave it aside where this body could change it again with a relative ease as compared to, yes, having to go back to the state legislature and ask them.
All right, I'm seeing several hands.
Because the clerk, we read the amendment? I don't, I need the specifics here.
I'll ask the clerk to read the amendments.
Are we just talking about one amendment now?
Let's just read the money amendment first.
I printed them out because I had a feeling this was going to happen. So if this is helpful to you, take a copy and...
Thank you.
A public reading of that by the clerk or by myself would be appropriate.
I'd be happy to, Mr. President, if you want. Point of order. Are we discussing, are we discussing both of them or one of them or what? I just want to know that.
You have not been recognized. Hold off, please.
You don't answer the question.
I asked if the clerk could read pursuant to the request of Counselor Tantar, the amendments, so we know what we're talking about. Let's take them in order. First is the one regarding the money, and that would be inserting a new Section 4.
That's, a new Section 4 reads as follows. "The city shall reserve any monies transferred to the city pursuant to Section 2 above inhibition to lower less than 100% of any ongoing meter revenues generated from parking on the land solely for the purposes of design, construction, maintenance, or operation of an extended waterfront park, as designated in this order under Article 97. Such funds shall be placed into a separate designated receipts reserve for appropriation fund for these purposes as improvements to the public realm." Period. That's it.
All right, let's stop right there. Counselor Vogel.
I just wanted to know which one we're discussing.
That's, that's the one that we were discussing. Thank you. Then Counselor Jenta, and Counselor Khan, I believe, had her hand up. And then I'm going to ask for a follow-up by counsel, our attorney. Go ahead, Counselor Jenta.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's interesting, you know, and I'm getting right to these amendments, but you know, the reason why a guy who sponsored dissolving the NRA twice voted not to take this out of committee is exactly what we're doing right now. This is all work that we do in committee, and I apologize to you for that, that we're doing this. This is, this is crazy, but I understand the mission. And my, the reason why we have these two amendments, okay, I want to stick to the amendments, is because when I, when I read the amendment, Article 97, it's great that it basically makes the property a park, but what it does, it makes the parking lot a park. And it also says that the parking lots, you know, are excluded, they'll remain. And again, I don't, I'm not, I don't have a big issue with that, but I, what I want this amendment to be is less about preserving, you know, the property and the park, and more about building a park. And that's what the amendment's here. I'm somebody who sponsored two resolutions to dissolve the NRA because I want a park. And redevelopment authorities are meant to build things. They're meant to build buildings. That's what they're, that's what they're supposed to do. So when I looked at this and read, I've had many people from the mayor's office call me and say, you know, "What are your reservations?" And my reservations are really the simple ones we talked about. Revenue, any money that's left over from the NRA when they go, when they close shop, that money needs to go into a bank account that's earmarked to build a park. I am here to build a park. Any money right now that is being generated in the NRA parking lots, that money is 100% goes back to the NRA. That money should 100% be going towards building a future park. Okay? So those are two revenue sources on how we're going to build a park. Then the last piece that's written in these amendments is it tells the citizens of Newburyport that this city is going to build an expanded park. It's not a question, because if this amendment passes the way that it is today, the city could leave it exactly the way it is, dirt parking lots. There's nothing that makes them make a park. That's a problem. So that's why we're working on these amendments, because we want to hit three targets here. We want to tell people that we are building an expanded park, but there's no timeline there because that takes money. Okay? And it also references what the NRA just gave us. It references, this is the park. It's here. This is the park we want to build. Okay? I love it. It's beautiful. So let's build a park. And then the other thing is, well, how are we going to do this? You know, we heard in our committee meeting on Thursday that 100% of the meter revenue was going to go to the city, but not to the park. That's why I asked you if that money from the meters could be put into a bank account for the park. We need money to build this park. And then the last, the last thing is, is that if, if this is sort of the rock-solid way of making it a park, once you tell people that you are building a park and you got the revenue to do it, you might be there. But there's one other piece of the puzzle, is there's nothing in here that says whether or not we're going to do anything with the waterfront trust. And that wasn't in my notes tonight, but the mayor's the one who said it when she was standing at the mic, is like, "Once this is done, then we can do that." And then the question is, is are we going to do that? Once we have all these green pastures, is the city going to hang on to them, or is it just going to make it part of the waterfront park? And so these are the questions that, that I have, that need to make this one order all make sense, where people at home can look at it and say, "When this is done, I got a park." So did I take a little exception that this came to me on Thursday and I had to vote it on Monday? I did. But I want a park and I want to do it right. So these are the pieces that we're trying to get in here, so I can look at residents and say, "When we're done, you're going to have a park, and it's going to be beautiful." And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Khan.
Nothing added at this point.
Looking around in the circle. I'm going to ask our attorney to, just a moment, to clarify this question as to whether or not we can earmark in the instrument that's going to go to the legislature, the money that we accept from the NRA if it is dissolved. Number one, is it legal? And then, is it advisable, in your opinion?
Legal, yes. Advisable, my first answer that I gave, I'm going to amend it a bit, because I, with all due respect, Counselor, I was so thrown that I was already voting for Presidents of the United States before you were born. I didn't listen closely enough. It must be my age. No, I can't see. It turns out I can't hear. I thought your reservation of meter funds and the original was to go to the trust, and that's, I think, not what you're talking about. You're talking about an earmark within the city. So my extreme reservation, which is, I think, how I would have described it had that been the proposal, is significantly lesser. And I think, Counselor Vogel, that's what you were hearing me say, and I think I overstated that now that I see it in writing, and I apologize for any confusion. That said, it remains unusual that you would do this. This is part of your ordinary and customary authority as the budget adopting body of this municipal subdivision of the Commonwealth. But it's perfectly within your rights, and whereas it may well be true, it is so baked into the history and circumstance that there is no meaningful question that that's an appropriate thing, and there isn't any time within the reasonably foreseeable future. I'd project that literally at a sort of 20-year time horizon, where you would want to recapture those parking revenues for some alternative purpose when parks' long seen is built and you're dealing with operation and maintenance, maybe you have some retail operations, I have no idea. That becomes a question you have to decide. I can't tell you how nimbly this or successor councils will change things on a whim, as you're right, they could do, and the extra protection having to the legislature, that's a judgment call. But ordinarily, people would not do it this way. They would reserve the right to themselves. They would adopt a simultaneous order with the exact same substance, which I think Counselor Aigerman would, I think, agree with me. The form over substance is maybe not the most important thing, but if you want to do it the other way, fine, too.
So the question was, is it legal? You're saying, yes.
Yes. Advisable. It's a balance on advisability, and it would be unusual for people to decide that it's advisable. But given the history here, this may be an unusual circumstance. I can't tell you that.
Thank you. Counselor Tantar.
I want to raise a minor point. When we discussed purchasing the kiosks for the waterfront trust lot and the NRA lots, we spent a lot of time talking about whether or not the city budget should be providing that capital for the NRA and the waterfront trust. My position was that we should. Others argue differently. So this 100% revenue from the, I think that, I would argue that the parking lots and the NRA lots and the waterfront lots, the revenue should support the parking management system on the waterfront and also in the Riverside lot. That's aside from the point, but we, the city should be subsidizing, all right, that. So it shouldn't be 100%. It should be 100% minus whatever the management costs are, I would suggest. And other than that, I have no problem with this. I support it. I think that the intent, my intent, all right, is that there would be sufficient revenue to build a park. I don't think this does it. I think that the city's going to have to make a decision about bonding and how we, how we do that in order to build this park, but certainly, this revenue is there, but it's going to take more.
Counselor Aigerman?
Yes. Well, I did hear one new thought that came from Attorney Lyman that I hadn't thought of, which is that, once the park is built, the 100% of the revenue probably is too much. That's probably correct. Looking at the Sidford Ulich Plan, they're going to be over 200 parking spaces when they're done. So again, just thinking long in the future, 100% is too much. Now, that leads me to the next point, which is raised by the people who objected to taking it out of committee, which is, do we have time to work this out in committee? So I guess what I would like to do is challenge staff to, maybe Mr. Coogan and our attorney, do we have to get this in, because I believe we do, this week to the legislature? Are we going to blow this, this year? That's my question, because we don't meet again in three weeks. The secondary question about what I still feel is a threat, which is, I don't know, we don't know what the NRA is going to do tomorrow night. We can deal with that later, but that's the first question. Do we have time? Do we have those three weeks? I was in the impression we don't.
I'll ask Mr. Coogan to approach the microphones so the public can hear your response.
Well, I think I would defer to Attorney Lyman as far as, I walked over here to say that, too. I did want to get a little microphone. Yeah, hey, hi, Mom, how you doing? But he's the expert, so I'll defer to him.
Okay. Mr. Lyman.
It's no different than the rest of life. Sooner is better than later. But it is different in one particular way. You, I think, know this, Mr. President, because of your own time on the Hill, beating the House budget, it's not inherently the difference of a year, but you should think of it that way. So if you get it before the House budget, which you would do, I think, if you voted tonight, and if you would not, if you waited, I believe, the second part I'm not confident of, but that's true. It's inherently that the legislature would kick you off to the next session, but it's, you know, you'd be in the rush at the end of the session, and that's a bad bet. So that, again, I can't give you a definitive answer, but it would be conventional for people in your situation to say, "Let's get it in. Let's make sure," and again, council orders or in amendments, we have the overall, we'll get to the Article 97, I assume, when we return to the main motion, if you wish, if I can give some comfort to people in the audience about what that's about. And then continue your planning processes as a follow-on in parallel while the thing sits there for a while to get passed by the legislature.
So to summarize, like this body, the state legislature is similar in that there's no certainty. There is, there are a lot of options.
It's an easy thing for me to say. It's really great when you got the legislature's attention. Keep it.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan.
I'll just add one thing. The administration does feel a sense of urgency to go forward with this at this time for all the reasons that Attorney Lyman just mentioned, and the fact that we have brought on Attorney Lyman and his, and the firm that would lobby on our behalf to the legislative body up to the state to kind of push this along, that is a testament to the urgency that we sense right now to get this done.
Thank you. And I believe the mayor made that point earlier. Counselor Zied.
Thank you.
And then Counselor Vogel.
I just want to say two things. One is, I want you to note that in the amendment on the money, it's 100% of ongoing meter revenues. And this is important because this is consistent with exactly what happens today. There are three sources of revenue that occur on the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority lots. Number one is meters. That's the largest. Number two is permits, and number three is tickets. And right now, today, 100% of the meter revenues pass through. They come into the city and they immediately go back out to the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. They do. I look at the P&Ls every month. They go 100%. There is nothing taken off the top. The city subsists its marked parking program on the tickets and, and the combined value slash amount of money which is received from park, from parking permits, which was the basis for discussion earlier. So I, you know, we can argue about the numbers all day long. Now, this is another lesson on how to make, you know, nine other people dislike you really quick, but we should have a special meeting next Monday, and we should allow the time that people want, but we shouldn't wait to three weeks. And you can all throw eggs and tomatoes at me after the meeting. I'll make myself available or in a dunk tank if one should show up. But if you ask me, that's the way out of this tonight. And we don't have to wait to three weeks. We also don't have to wait, you know, we don't have to do, we can, not all these things are mutually exclusive. We have a way out of this. The attorney's already given us one way out of potentially putting this in the Home Rule, if that's the will of the council. That's appreciated. I get what you're saying. But we have another option, so I don't want it to become this weird dichotomy between waiting now and three weeks, which somehow becomes a year. There's another option in the middle. I will buy you the tomatoes if that's what it takes.
Counselor Vogel, and then Counselor Aigerman.
Thank you. Having heard that it is, your objection earlier was misstated, or restated...
I got smarter.
Right. I get all of this, and I, I mean, for the, just for a little bit of background, I'm all in favor of the NRA and have been from the very beginning. I think at this point in time, though, it's time for them to go their separate ways, and I appreciated the mayor earlier speaking about connecting the dot as to why we should do this, et cetera, et cetera, and how it relates to the waterfront trust. What happens to the money if we don't mention it in this Home Rule petition?
It goes into the city's general fund to be dealt with however you ordinarily, customarily do that.
So we do away with the NRA and...
Suddenly have an influx of whatever, 400 or plus or minus $1,000, and then whatever the stream of payments is that, right now, you pass through. Now, instead of passing through, it sounds like you receive them and pass them along. You would just not do that. You'd retain them. And how you deal with your appropriations, I don't know, but that's what would happen with this.
There's got to be a way we can...
I'll come back to you.
Why money?
Thank you.
He's reserving his rights to come back up. Counselor Aigerman?
The explanation from the counsel from Ward 1 is really helpful, so I no longer have any objection to the 100%. And the reason why is, it's more important to get this to the legislature immediately and not miss a year than fight over nickels and dimes. You know, it's just, this now is the time. So if that's what it takes to get this to the legislature, and my understanding is we only need six votes, that's, that's what we should do. As far as meeting next week, unfortunately, I'm out of state. I don't know about others. I would gladly come back, but it's, I'm visiting someone, and I, it's not something I can postpone. So I think tonight is the night for me.
Counselor Vogel, I reserved some time for you. Did you want to jump back in? Did you have a brainstorm?
No, I'm good.
You are. Thank you. Counselor Zied, and then Counselor Tantar.
I just wanted to answer one question you wouldn't be expecting. We have a receipts reserve for appropriation fund that parking monies go into, so if you dissolve the redevelopment authority, the meter revenue would go into that, RFA, which we had much disagreement or agreement about, depending on how you look at it. And that's why I wrote this reserve for appropriation fund separately, because we adopted that, and I pulled a copy of that order, which now is, for some reason, not in my pile, but we passed that reserve, receipts reserve for appropriation fund under certain sections of the new Mass Modernization Act, which allow us to designate the money, and one of the possible uses is improvements to the public realm, which I tried to replicate that language into here to make it clear that this was permissible. So, I mean, just to cut to the chase, a lot of people think that this is an effort to pay for the garage. So that money will certainly be going to that bond, so let's not dance around it at this point. That's the deal. That's the question people are asking at home. So let's answer that question, and I'm making a good faith effort here to answer it as best I can, and I would welcome any, you know, again, whatever debate we want to have on it. But I think people should take comfort in knowing that this isn't money the city has ever touched or taken in the past. It was never factored into the garage pro forma, which I've had my own questions about, but, but this was not one of the questions. You know, the finance director can attest to that, but it was never anywhere in there, so this would be inconsistent to change that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tantar? I think you can sit down. Counselor Tantar is directing questions to the attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
So I am going to vote in favor of these two amendments, including the 100%. I think, given our particular history, that it is vital that we indicate to the community that we, we support building this park, and we'll do everything we can. I also want to be a little redundant and support the Ward 1 counsel. I went through the garage pro formas in some detail over the weekend. There was no revenue from the NRA lots that went in the pro forma, nor was there any revenue from the Riverside parking lot that went to support the parking garage. So all the pro formas, we may have some questions on it, and I think it's time to reexamine that, but it was never presented that revenue from the waterfront lots would in any way, manner, shape, or form would go to finance the garage.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devlin?
Yeah. Although I express some reservations about being too detailed in here, I actually thought Attorney Lyman put it very well, which is the particular nature of this, this issue lends itself to perhaps doing this. So I have, I have no objection. I will support it if this gets it done, because I think overall, moving us forward incrementally, talked about it with the garage, incremental steps for getting things off the waterfront[1784.38] so that we can get, I think the biggest obstacle we have right now is the NRA and that we don't have ultimate control of this property. It was very frustrating, it's been very, it's the most frustrating thing, other than CBA complaints, that I've heard of since I've been on this council. So I will support it with the, if it gets it done, I'll support it with the amendments as well.
All right. I think we've talked this one through closely. And I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the two amendments separately, so there's no uncertainty about what we're voting on. Could the clerk please read "Insert a new Section 4," the first proposed amendment to the motion, to the proposal before us.
City shall reserve any monies transferred to the city pursuant to Section 2 above, in addition to no less than 100% of any ongoing meter revenues generated from parking on the land solely for the purposes of design, construction, maintenance, and operation of extended waterfront park, as designated in this order under Article 97. Such funds shall be placed into a separate designated receipts reserve for appropriation fund for these purposes as improvements to the public realm.
All right. That is the first item I'm going to ask for a vote on. If there is no further discussion, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this matter.
Just for the record, so that was, Counselor Zied made the motion that was seconded by Counselor Junta.
I frankly don't recall. Was it Counselor Junta?
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Let's go to the videotape.
Here we go on the motion to insert this new Section 4. Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigerman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien is still absent. Sorry, Counselor Shan. That was a yes. Counselor Tantar. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes.
10 yes, 1 absent.
So the motion is adopted. Now we have a second motion on an amendment. Insert a new Section 9. Could you read that, please?
The city of Newburyport commits to designing, funding, and building a waterfront park in accordance with the will of the residents of the city of Newburyport, period. On a best efforts basis, the design shall be consistent with the principles and references documented in Communication 67 submitted 5/30/2017, dash, the Ad Hoc Central Waterfront Committee, agreed upon by the Newburyport City Council in May of 2017 by a 10, 0, 1 absent vote. And I trust that was also made by Counselor Zied, seconded by Counselor Junta.
Any questions about what you're voting on? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this second amendment to the dissolution proposal that came from Counselor Aigerman.
This is inserting a new Section 9.
A new section, correct.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigerman.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Having disposed of those amendments, we revert to the discussion of the initial motion.
Which was a motion to amend by inserting the matter with those now two insertions in Section 4 and Section 9.
Discussion. Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Counsel President. So, you know, I supported those amendments because I thought they definitely filled a gap. So thank you for suggesting those, Counsel Zied. I go back still to not being, again, comfortable. What I'm hearing from the legal is that, you know, normally you get a home rule petition like this, and then it has an accompanying order. If I miss, I think that's what I heard. So a part of me, again, I'm always about the process and procedure and anything that we set as a precedence. And I always go back to that, and I hope I'm true to every issue I talk about here in wanting to follow that. And I really want to say, I still feel the same way. And I think the way to do this correctly for us would be to go to a committee of planning of development and create that order, which gives it these items, you know, kind of refines it, maybe have some data looking at exactly the percent of monies, looking, again, at the ad hoc document, which I, will be absolutely honest, I, from 2017, I haven't looked at it lately to see how relevant it is to be codified or put into this home rule petition. However, I think there's more work that needs to be done, and I really encourage us to slow down. I really don't like this pressure that we have to do this tonight. And I cannot tell you how appalling I find that, just for me personally in making that decision, knowing that there's other ways it could be done better. So I guess you want a question, so I can ask you a question. Is that, did I, did I hear you correctly when you said that normally if there are stipulations that are kind of coming along with that type of home rule petition, there's an accompanying order that is done first?
I appreciate that, Counsel. I don't want a question, but if you want an answer, I'll give it.
Thank you, sure.
Technically speaking, I think I know who works for who, okay? I think I said something a little different. What I was suggesting was that you could handle the matters that be addressed by Counselor Zied's amendments as orders of this council adopted simultaneously with the submission of the home rule petition, if you so wished, because you didn't want to involve the state legislature in future changes, for example, as Counsel Arden pointed out when you get to the operation main stage. It would be customary to have the authority to be granted by this home rule petition be assumed by the city and then the subsequent planning processes to go afterwards. That is, that's the ordinary course. That doesn't mean that's the course you have to adopt, but that's the ordinary course, would be to do those things separately and subsequently.
Thank you. And actually, I stood back up because that actually really, that was, and I'm sorry, I wish I could take back my vote, because, again, we have codified something, so to speak, in the way that to change any of that, we have to go back to a home rule petition. And yeah, I know it only takes six votes. That's not a lot, right? When we look and see and try to count the votes up, but it's sloppy. I'm sorry, it is. I think there's certain aspects, I know people want to respond to me, but I just feel like the order and having pieces of it that can be looked at and refined and maybe changed is actually healthy. I really do think that. So I'm just going to say, overall, I'm not going to support the home rule petition the way we're doing it right now.
Thank you.
With your indulgence, Mr. President.
Yes, please respond, and then Counselor Aigerman, and then Counselor Zied.
The plan you have in front of you that I've seen, it does look a very nice plan, I agree, but it's just a concept plan. In the ordinary, customary matter, even including this in the home rule petition as written, will allow plenty of opportunities if you, as the council and the citizenry so choose, to do all sorts of refinements. You do not need to build just that exact thing. You're not as nailed down as tightly as I think you may be concerned about. To make a wholesale change in direction to a fundamentally differently programmed park from what looks like a passive recreational park into a heavily active recreational park with, you know, tennis courts and basketball courts, that might be too far a reach. But if you wish to change the patterns of pathways or relationship to the water, some of the landscaping, or artistic or sculptural features, or even the planting plans, that's wholly within your discretion, even if it's included in the plan, put in the, referenced in the home rule petition.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Counselor Aigerman, and then Counselor Zied, I see is...
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect I'm going to persuade everyone, especially the at-large counselor. She's made her position plain. But again, I hope I can convince at least five other counselors that this is not an ordinary situation. The Newburyport waterfront battles, poor Sharif has only been in it since, what, the 80s?
I was born into it.
One year later, after they demolished everything in 1968, I arrived at Anna Jakes Hospital in 1969. This is not a normal situation. To speak of, well, ordinary, ordinarily, in other towns, they do it like this, that's irrelevant. There is no ordinary. This is us. We had to send this to the legislature in order to give comfort to people who've been working on this for 50 years, that we are not trying to steal money, we're not trying to betray the park. And I do want to echo what Mr. Lyman, Attorney Lyman said, which is, the 2017 plan, although some may be unfamiliar with it, was very, very carefully crafted. It incorporates expressly the Sidford Ulyg Plan, which is a conceptual plan. We've agreed on the concept now for almost two years. So there really is no danger in putting it in the legislation.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Zied, and then Counselor Tantar.
Thank you. I do have to respond.
And I hope none of you make me feel even older than I'm feeling right now based on your birthdays.
I just want to see, Mr. President, it's not, you know, these guys, Jesus. I'm waiting for somebody in my decade.
I don't have any questions, thank you. I don't want to hold you up. But there is a different way to do it, and it's a policy decision, but this is not sloppy. So I think that that's kind of a little bit much for me. Yeah, the benefit, I think we've gone through this. The benefit of putting in an accompanying order is that it's easier to change. The problem with putting in an order is that it's easier to change. Welcome to the Newburyport Central Waterfront. Everything is a pro and a con on both sides of the list. It's my opinion, and now apparently the opinion of the city council, that putting in the home rule petition, making it harder to change, is desirable. And so that's actually already been decided. But what I do want to say, now that we're on the main thing, because I hope this will be my last time.
Please focus on the item.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. Let's just recap what we're getting here. What is, what is this thing giving us? You're getting a park. It's protected by Article 97 of the Massachusetts State Constitution, not something that's easy to change. It requires, it will require a 2/3 majority to put it into this park status. It would require a 2/3 majority to pull it out of that status, only after some hot nights here in this city council room pushing, you know, pushing something like that out to the state legislature. They don't generally run around decertifying parks, from what I know. So you got that. Number two is, you have, you have the money locked up. You have the existing money coming out of the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, $500,000, plus or minus, going into a fund for the park. You have the ongoing meter revenues tied up into receipts reserve for appropriation fund for the purposes of the park. And number three, you have a commitment from the city in Section 9 to build this thing. And this has got to be it. I mean, it's got to, it's, this is, this is, I'm speechless. Please support this. I don't know what, what else could you want?
That's the first time I've heard you say your speech.
Holy... It's only a word.
You've been very eloquent. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, I don't believe it. So I am, I'm going to vote in favor of this order as amended. I would like to spend a little time referencing that 5/30/17 ad hoc report, and some, and actually, what I, I may differ with some of you. I think the members of the NRA have done, actually have done an honorable and hard work, and I respect what they have done. However, I think we have a structural problem. And the structural problem is you have the NRA discussing with the waterfront trust and making decisions that is only appropriate for the city to make, all right? And so the, my problem is not really with the NRA. The problem is, it's, the city needs to directly, if we're going to get this park built, it's time for the city to go face to face with the waterfront trust. And so that's why I'm supporting this. It's not a reflection on how I feel about what the NRA is doing, although I can understand. And some of the things that I want to refer to, you know, in the executive summary that proposed settlement, we said the city takes exclusive easement to operate public parking at the Western East parking lots. Why am I interested in that? Not for the revenue.
Right.
All right? Not for the revenue. But if I had $1,000 for every time someone has expressed confusion over the fact that city permits can't be used in the waterfront lot and the Riverside lot, all right? If I had, what did I say? $1,000, I could build the park. All right? And so it's that kind of confusion that I think, the city, we have an interest, we have a vital interest in that park, and representing the taxpayers of this city. And I think the NRA has tried to, the members have tried to do an admirable job representing the city, but I think it's time for us to represent the taxpayers as to what happens on the park. There's some, I mean, the Subworthlands equally split between the city and the waterfront trust, that we had called, all right, in that 5/30/17 for a reorganization of the trust, and that hasn't happened. That hasn't happened. That was a fairly significant piece of why we, and, you know, I don't know, the NRA maybe, you know, can't force the waterfront trust to do it, but I think that's a big piece. Actually, I really like the idea of we incentivize the building of the park for the waterfront trust to do, but, you know, we're saying 100% of revenue, that's gone, and I understand that. And it says simply here, and the city would assist in identifying grants to fund construction. I think the city's going to have to do more than that. I think the city's going to have to actually, you know, build it. And the city has ample experience getting things done, and has the capacity to do it, whereas the waterfront trust doesn't have the capacity to do it. So we're committed to getting this done. What did disturb me is looking at this third revision to the Newburyport Waterfront Trust document, all right, which, which does commit the city to all sorts of things, but without, from my point of view, the appropriate level of oversight and authority so that we can, so that we can accomplish the public good. And so that's why I would argue that the NRA, this is the appropriate move to make now, and I think this will result in the park getting made.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Shan.
Thank you. Mr. Lyman, you did mention one thing, how if something does go into the home rule petition, there is a gray area. What is, if we change the 100%, is that the gray area where we can make that change ourselves, or is that something that, what's, where's the, where's the change there?
There isn't when it comes to the numbers.
The numbers do say, okay.
Okay. But what I refer to is the plan that Counsel Junta shared, that I know is well-known, and suggesting, in response to Counsel Khan saying that you needn't worry that you're locked into, actually, the absence of detail. It's a conceptual plan. It's a very good conceptual plan, but that ordinary stuff would be, that's where the flexibility remains.
And one more comment.
Follow me, please.
I will say this makes for great TV watching. We do do this veteran committee.
Amen. I think we're getting close to a, to a conclusion, but I see Counsel Vogel.
Well, I'm new to town. Only been here for 26 years. I think that we're getting somewhere, and I fully support it, and I would love to move the question.
No, please don't. Could I, could I? I had one more person wishing to speak. If you could withhold that motion, would you consent to withholding your move to question?
I won't hold it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Devlin.
Thank you. Because, although the counsel from Ward 2 is not interested in convincing others, I am, because honestly, when we were just doing this and getting 10-0, I was kind of getting goosebumps, because as the at-large counselor says, we are getting somewhere. This is a first step, and I understand not everybody's going to be satisfied with it. There are multiple parties here, and there are multiple private parties here that the city, and we are the city, the people that are elected to, you know, we are the mouthpiece of the residents. We are socially responsive to them. We will be called to the carpet next November if we're not responsive to them. We still have a lot of work to do, but the first step is getting actually in a position where we have some control. Right now, there are multiple parties involved that the people, the residents, don't have a control over, and the most one that's the most removed is the NRA. And I would, I don't want to get rid of the waterfront trust. There are some, and there are good people. I don't know Chairman Ulyg at all. I did feel some antagonism towards him when he was up speaking the last time, I swear he didn't ask any questions, because I was like, I don't want to unload on the poor guy. I don't know him. But everything he's saying is out of my control, and it's really frustrating, because it frustrates my constituents. I don't want to get rid of Cow, but for Cow, we would not be here, mostly ladies in the audience right now. You've driven this agenda to where it is. It's not perfect solution, but it's getting closer to the solution. So let me just say, the origins for me, I don't think this is sloppy. The origins for me were, there was an ad hoc committee where especially the Counselor from Ward 2 and the Counselor from Ward 1 committed a lot of time to it. And then we, I showed up to about half of them. They showed up to every single one of them. The Counselor from Ward 2 organized it, thought about it, was, you know, I have seen now behind the scenes a little bit what he does with the Waterfront West Ad Hoc Committee. He puts in a massive amount of time. I bet you he spends two days out of the work week working on city, you know, government work for free, you know, I mean, for $5,000 a year. So, and a very clear plan. It was voted on and approved 10 to nothing here, and then it was ignored. And that's, the Yulig and St. Seer nominations came to us March 12, 2018, and I remember the sponsors getting together and saying, are you kidding me? We're getting, we're getting appointments for the NRA, which we want dissolved? This is unbelievable. So that's when this, the first resolution came forward. This is a very simple document that's being proposed here. We're asking the legislature to do some narrowly tailored things that they're responsible for. And then we get the property back, and then we get to decide within the limits of that document what we're going to do with it. So we do have more work to do, and the at-large Counsel, I have no doubt from her performance in the last year, you're going to be front and center in helping to shape this. And I really, really hope that you can come along for three years. You should have been around for the garage if you didn't like the pressure of being rushed. I find it very ironic that some of the people that were standing here at the microphone were saying, don't rush. Though, I want to go, I'm going to go find their emails and send them back to them tomorrow morning and say, wait a second, but it's okay to rush on an $11 million garage? Seriously? But Tom, it's okay, I really like you. But, but again, a former NRA chair who I thought stepped in the breach and did a really good job, and is a terrifically nice man. So there's nothing against the people that are populating the NRA. So it's, for me, this is an incremental, it's like the garage. It's the same argument I made about voting for it. It's an incremental baby step towards getting, and maybe larger than a baby step, it's going to be a historic step, of getting towards a waterfront park. And again, we are the city. We are going to own this property, and we're going to be able to control it. So I really, we've also sat through a lot of plays where, when we voted for school committee, we wanted to redo the vote. Somebody wanted, the administrator wanted to redo the vote so we'd get a unanimous vote. And I was poo-pooing that, but I just really hope we can get a unanimous vote here, because it would be a really, really big step for all of us. Things that we can look back 20 years from now and be very proud of ourselves.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we've jaw-boned this enough.
Mr. President.
I don't want to curtail discussion, but before we move any further, we're going to have to vote to extend our meeting beyond 10 o'clock.
Sometimes.
No, wait.
It's 11 o'clock.
10 o'clock. What does the rule say?
11.
Oh, I take that back.
All right.
Well, we won't have to do that, the pace we're going, so let's see if we can, Mr. Clerk.
I just want to recite where we're at. If I heard the original motion by Counselor Augerman, it's a motion to amend by substituting the April 4th Amendment, which was amended by adding those two insertions, four and nine. So we actually have a motion to amend on the floor, which I think properly would then be followed by a motion to approve as amended. So if we are moving indeed to the question, Mr. President, we're going to vote on a motion to amend by substitution.
By substitution, yes.
On the April 4th proposed amendment, as we all have seen, and also that includes the additional two amendments, nine and four. Shall I do a roll call vote, Mr. President?
And subsequent to that, we would need a vote to forward this to the legislature. Is that correct?
Would need, to follow that, would need a motion to approve as amended. If you would like, we could then.
Very well.
Do whatever you want.
So the roll call is to approve the motion by substitution of language that has been further amended by previous vote of the council.
That's correct, Mr. President. Shall I proceed?
Please, by roll call. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's an amendment.
Counselor Con.
Sorry. Thank you, Counselor President. There's just two whereas's that are the same. I didn't know if you, if it mattered, if you could just remove them on page three.
Is this a clerical error?
I think it's a clerical.
Could the clerk review that for a moment? Just hold up for a second until he gets a chance to review.
On page three?
At the bottom, page three. The only difference is the second one has a further in the third sentence.
Was that intentional, Counselor?
Where are you, where?
Just a moment.
Whereas, as evidenced.
These two.
No, they're different. If I may.
Please, Counselor Augerman.
Yeah, no, they're different. Under the most recent case on Article 97, you're supposed to also facilitate the actual intent. So you'll notice in the second whereas clause, the bottom, it says, "to facilitate the actual use of such lands permanently." So that's why you need both. One is to have unequivocal and clear intent that you're trying to dedicate it as parks and conservation, but you also have to facilitate, you actually have to act on it, which also Counselor, Counselor from Ward 1's amendment furthers as well. But that's why, that's to track case law, to make no question about it that we really mean Article 97. Maybe we, you can get some more legal advice on that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Con, are you satisfied with that response?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, no, thank you. It's a good catch.
Shall I?
Roll call vote.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes.
I believe a motion to approve.
Motion to approve as amended.
If I can, if you bear with me for one minute.
And the outcome of that was?
That was nine yes, one no, one absent.
Okay, so we have substituted a different language for the initial order to dissolve the NRA.
Yeah, I'm opposed to approve as amended.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Counselor Z.
And let's be clear about what this does. Does this forward this proposal to the legislature?
You betcha.
This is.
The clerk wouldn't know what else to do with it.
Don't tempt me, Richard.
Shall I, Mr. President?
Moved by Counselor Augerman and seconded by?
Counselor Z.
Counselor Z, thank you.
This is a motion to approve as amended.
Yes, by roll call.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes.
Nine yes, one no, one absent goes history.
Very well.
Motion to remove appointments 88, 89, and 91 collectively for Wilbur Shank, Paul Healy, and Rick Tainter.
Second.
I'm sorry, Counselor, were we going to act on the NRA appointment first?
That's what we had next.
Oh, that's up to you. I believe that was next in order, okay?
It was, it was. So if I can, we'll flip back to that. This was Appointment 96, as previously read, appointing.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Motion to refer to planning and development. Seconded, discussion, Counselor Augerman.
Yes, I mean, I think in the absence of passing Order 24, I would have, I would have proposed an emergency preamble in order to signal a sort of stop order to the NRA, but I think we just, you know, nine to nothing, evidence, sorry, nine to one, evidenced what our intent is as a legislature on behalf of the people of Newport. So I don't, I don't know that it's an emergency that we change personnel. That's just my opinion. Someone else could make a motion to make an emergency, but we could, we'd have to waive the rules too by two-thirds majority.
We have an emergency preamble in hand if someone moved to take this up on an emergency basis.
Move on.
Hearing none.
Fine.
There's nothing to act on.
Yes, there is. A motion to refer.
It was motion to refer. And was it seconded? I didn't see the second. I'm sorry. I missed it. Counselor Z is seconded.
Yes.
Refer to.
Planning and development.
Planning and development. Discussion. Beyond that, which Counselor Augerman has offered. Hearing none. All those in referring, all those by voice vote in favor of referring this appointment to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very well.
Counselor Augerman, do you have anything else?
I'm sorry. Motion to remove appointments 88, 89, 91. Shank, Healy, and Tainter collectively.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, remove these from committee. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, we don't have to do that again.
Motion to approve by roll call collectively.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve collectively.
Discussion. Counselor Augerman.
Yes, we, as the rules require, we had a public hearing last Thursday. All three gentlemen attended. Counselor Jenta and I were in attendance, and we recommended all three by two to nothing.
Additional discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think it's a roll call, Mr. President.
A roll call.
I'm afraid you're going to say that.
This is a motion approved.
It's the planning board appointment.
Motion approved collectively. Counselor Devlin.
Aye.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yep.
Counselor Connell.
Yes. I'm going to ask for a ruling by the clerk on whether or not taking these out of committee by voice vote was appropriate, and that one of them was by the planning board. Is that still appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, a motion removed by voice is fine.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor?
Yeah, a bunch. Motion to remove Communication 105, letter, Ray Newport condominiums.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Moving and filed.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion received and filed.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion to remove Communication 123, comprehensive updates in Newport zoning.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove ordinance 3, amendment to table of use regulations.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion received and filed.
Second. Moved and seconded, received and filed. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, there is a brief discussion.
No, 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 there isn't. I waived it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Communication 132, freestanding sign, Three Perkins Way.
Second. Moved and seconded, removed from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve pending reading by the clerk. Tell us what we're doing again.
Mr. Clerk, is there a second to that motion? Counselor Jenta. Thank you, Counselor.
What makes you think I need a copy? Yeah, do you have it? 132, right? I have it in here, I just don't have it bookmarked.
I could fill some time.
I've got it.
I could too. We had a, we had a hearing on this matter. Counselor Jenta and I held the hearing, and it was attended by the sponsor and the representative from the sign company. Very briefly, there's been sort of an informal effort down in the business in industrial parks to replace, you know, a mishmash of signs down there directing people to industrial businesses with a standard sign that has multiple.
Agreed.
Directions on it. The reason why it's before us is because many of these are in the public way. So we looked at the material, as I hope other counselors have as well. We felt that it was an attractive sign, and we were going to recommend approval 2 to nothing, but we did condition it on removal of some of these haphazard signs, because there were some signs on Parker Street that supposedly were going to be replaced by one of these signs, but both were there, both the haphazard signs and the new sign. But I'm very glad to say the applicant has affected the removal of those signs as promised, and therefore I recommend approval tonight.
Thank you. And the vote was, did you say the vote was?
2-0.
2-0. Further discussion. Hearing none. A roll call? No, there's no need for a roll call on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is done.
You didn't even have to be there, Richard.
I know. Counselor, is there anything else in planning and development you would wish to bring out tonight?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety.
Okay, let's try with this new system here, so.
New to you.
Motion to approve Communication 126 from 3/11/2019, Go Purple for Alzheimer's.
Second. Okay, that's on page four of our packet. Was there a second?
Yes, Counselor from Ward 1.
Thank you. Discussion.
Yes, we heard from Ms. Dale Agaranger-Ecker. They want to use the Bull Nose for a banner and signs, and she's also, she failed to mention that she, is she still here?
No.
Because I told her she didn't have to come, but she's also going to have a quilt to raffle that she made. The only, it was recommended for approval 2 to nothing. The only question we had as a committee to the clerk, who did not happen to pass by as we were there, and I had asked him a question already, I can't remember, do we require insurance and sign-offs for people using a table at the Bull Nose? No, we do not. It's a matter of policy. We can, but, no. I mean, it's barely an event. You know, an event needs one. You can argue anything needs insurance at this point because we require it for, an A-frame sign, for example. Wouldn't be unreasonable, but we have not typically. This does not sound like a profitable moneymaker where that they're going, she's raffling a quilt that she made. So this is more for awareness. I'm reluctant to make her go get insurance for what is, could be free speech, you know, gathering. So that's our recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove, I have to remove this one, actually, don't I? Because I didn't make it in there. Motion to remove Communication 124 from 3/11/2019.
It's already out.
No, I didn't get that one in there.
It's highlighted.
Commerce events?
You're right.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah. Because we didn't hear it until Thursday night.
Counselor, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that motion? I'm confused.
This one did not get out. Motion to remove. Just motion to remove.
Just motion to remove, is that correct?
Yes. From March 11, 2019.
Fine. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Devlin.
Yes, Elizabeth is here. She's from the council. Elizabeth, let me get your last name here. Hurley. Sorry about that. And she is from the council. She met with us Thursday night.
From the chamber?
From the chamber. Excuse me. Good point. And she's, the application covers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 events that the chamber is holding throughout the year. They did it this way last year. Elizabeth came in with, so this is approved 2 to nothing with an amendment. And the amendment is that spring into Newburyport, it's traditionally been two days, and the merchants wanted the two days back. So instead of just Sunday, May 26, 2019, it's now Sunday, May 26, 2019, and Monday, the 27th. And the other fall into Newburyport, both of these have been done for decades, was traditionally Sunday and Monday over Columbus Day, correct? And that would be the 13th and 14th. They were going to mix it up and do it a couple of Sundays for four weeks in October. Again, the retailers want one concentrated date. So she amended that fall in Newburyport. It's Sunday, Monday, October 13th and 14th. Otherwise, it's the same. All of these are events that they've held before. There's explanations there, and it was recommended, approve as amended 2 to nothing.
Discussion beyond that point. Counselor Z and then Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only question I have really is just on the motion to approve. It's my recollection that in the past, we've received a letter like this. But then we have processed applications for each event as we've gone. That's how I recall it. Like, I remember Cruising the 50s last year was, we have. And here's my only point. I think the events are great. I'm deeply appreciative you came in early with the dates. Helps a lot. The only thing we need is to be able to let a butters know if a road's going to be closed. Some of them may be obvious. Cruising the 50s, most people understand what that is. But I think the notification has been the important part too, and that usually gets rolled into, "Hi, we're here for this specific event. On this specific date, we're going to use these specific streets, things that are not in here." So I don't have any problem approving it. I would just suggest that perhaps we approve it contingent to the, you know, the defined details being presented, at least to the clerk, for each event so that it can be reviewed by either, I don't know if it comes back to here. I'll just say this. I have been applying different standards to the events versus all that's known to us, unless there's any massive coverage to it, it's sort of a known quantity. I think it could be acceptable to have a lower bar on it. But if it's something new, or you're taking Cruising the 50s, and now it's everywhere from Market Street to Federal Street, then that's a different story. So that's just my recollection. And I remember going through Cruising the 50s last year. So I think we just want to get that.
Very well. Would the clerk like to respond?
Well, I just want to make the point, and I think Elizabeth might agree, that the major events still have their own individual event apps coming in. Am I right?
Should we do that?
The major events still have their own individual event applications coming in.
Right.
Right. This was done this way last year. We got a letter, this letter is cutting based, for the most part.
I'm sorry, counselors. I believe Counselor Khan had her hand up.
No, that answered.
That answered. Thank you. Counselor Vogel.
Well, I guess, you say motion to approve. We're receiving and filing. We're not approving these events, is my take on it. I agree with the counselor from Ward 1. This is not an application for an event. This is a notification that these are coming. Because there's no, there's no, there's no event application here. It's blank.
Well.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
While the counselor is looking for an answer, I'm going to recognize Counselor Agarwal for the... So most of this stuff is in Ward 2, so please indulge me. I think the way is to parse this is we're just approving the dates.
Yeah.
So we're just approving the dates, and I would support so that they're able to plan. But I like what the counselor from Ward 1 was saying because there are details, like just today, I got emails from some merchants on Pleasant Street saying, "Hey, make sure there isn't a tent, you know, right in front of my store." Those kind of details we need to work out. So as long as that's entered into the record and out there in TV land, and there it is on video, I will support approving the dates.
Well, defer to the Ward 2 counselor.
I'm sorry, let the clerk respond. He receives the applications, so I'd like to hear what he wants to say.
Take that as a friendly amendment. It's actually a motion approved as to the dates only.
Sure.
Is acceptable.
It's been seconded.
And seconded?
Ready for vote.
Acceptable to the second?
I'll second it. Will we have, okay.
I'm sorry.
So we have a motion approved with, as to the dates only, on the floor.
Yes. All right. Counselor Z.
Yes. Spring Invitation Night, Friday, May 10.
Better hurry.
Trying to avoid a nightmare in three weeks from now. So the only opportunity you'd have to get that approved would actually be in an emergency, one-day thing. So my question for you is, can you, if through the chair, I'm sorry, Mr. President, could you provide us any information that may give us comfort to approve that event? And I don't know if others will agree with it, but you can try, as opposed to bringing in an application as, not as a late file, hopefully it gets into the packet. But then it would be waive the rules, emergency preamble, approval. You already have the insurance, so you're one leg up there. That's good until 8:519. And this is a repeat event. If the chair would indulge, could you tell us about it? Maybe we can get there tonight.
Come on to the mic. For a moment, because there might be an alternative that you would consider. And that is that we give the authority to accept a completed application to the clerk. Since he processes all the applications anyway, that we don't have to dance through some hoops and...
Well, why don't you tell us the emergency preamble?
No? No? All right, come on up. Let her come up. Go ahead.
So the Spring Invitation Night, that's basically similar to the invitation nights held in December, where merchants have extended hours. People will shop, they dine, they wander from store to store.
So there are no closed public ways? There's no closed roads? There's regular business just a little bit later in downtown?
Exactly.
That's all I'm trying to get on the record. I don't know. Trying to go...
It's in the communication. Counselor Vogel, did you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I ignored you there.
I mean, this is where we get into trouble, when we wing it. And I think that we need a bit of policy. And I agree. It is in the record. But just for the record, what we just, what we just did is we accepted these dates. We didn't necessarily approve the events.
I'm going to tell you right now, our committee approved the events.
Excuse me, Counselor? Counselor, be the chair, please. Counselor Vogel has the floor.
So then, if that is the case, I'm going to vote no. Because there's no application associated with each and every event. That's all, in terms of process.
If I may. Counselor Devlin.
What event is happening on Spring Invitation Night that requires an event permit?
I'm speaking of this document.
Tell me what event, what are they doing on Spring Invitation Night that you think under our ordinance requires them to even get a permit from us?
I'm not necessarily speaking of Spring Invitation...
Are you seating the floor now? Are you seating the floor? Thank you.
I'm not necessarily speaking to the Spring Invitation Night. That is in the narrative. And I understand that that's not taking the streets. But there are others that are taking the streets that we need.
Right. And we were just talking about the Spring Invitation by May.
We're having a back-and-forth, independent of the chair and independent of the people who are watching. So if you have a comment to make, and it is germane to the proposal before us, please ask to be recognized. Counselor Z.
Let me help make it clear. So the motion to approve on the floor is just the dates. I will make a motion to amend to also approve Spring Invitation Night only.
Second. All right.
I'm fine with it.
All right. Further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else coming out of committee, Counselor?
Yes. Motion to receive and file Order 31 from May 30, 2018. Actually, motion to receive and file collectively Order Number 31 and Number 32.
Second. Moved and seconded.